And I call this regularly scheduled Dunwoody City Council meeting to order. Um, we had slight change because we have a family member here. So Councilwoman Harris, can you lead us in the invocation and the pledge of allegiance, please?
You would all rise? At this meeting, help us to make decisions which keep us faithful to our mission and reflect our values. Give us strength to hold to our purpose, wisdom to guide us, and a keen perception to lead us. And above all, keep us charitable as we deliberate.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God. With liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Councilwoman Harris. Excuse me. Just in case any of you didn't already know this, and I found out the hard way today. If you're going east on two eighty-five and you need to get off at Ashford Dunwoody Road, it's like five miles from Ashford Dunwoody Road. And the sign is not very good. I'll be sending an email to Georgia DOT. Was not the only one who made that mistake because as I got off on Shambly Dunwoody to get back here. There were lots of cars in line with me. So just wanted to share that. Um, Councilwoman Harris.
Thank you. Just a moment of personal privilege. I just want to point out that I will be recusing myself from item number five, the special menus permit for fifty-three forty-two Tilly Mill Road, as I am an employee of the MJCCA.
Thank you. With that, um, we're gonna have public comment, but I wanna educate people in case you're new. So, cause a lot of these cards are related. Can y'all hear me? I'm sorry. That's probably better. Um, a lot of these cards are for the JCC's SLUP request or against it. They're just related to it. And we will have a public hearing later. Um, where you get ten minutes for and ten minutes against, but feel free to speak during this session. But I just wanted you to know that there will be another opportunity. Though it's hard to tell, I think I have more cards than the thirty minutes we've allotted. So if someone just before you has said what you think, feel free to come up and say, I agree with so-and-so and sit right back down. If you want as many people to speak as possible. So, um, and again, there will be a public hearing when we get to the actual item. Um, Cam Romanoff, please. Oh, Carrie. Yeah, I'm sorry. It looks like Cam. This time it's not me. Uh, nope, you got, oh, so you'll have three minutes. When you get up, make sure the green light's on the microphone, which it probably is. And lean in and speak to the microphone. You have three minutes. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for letting me speak. Hi, how are you doing today? Thank you. Uh, I'm here as an advocate for the initiative for the JCC. A, uh, I live in the neighborhood. Uh, and I'd like to kinda just talk about sports for a quick second and how important they are to our kids. Sports is about life lessons and I believe that the facility that is in question is going to be a pickleball place, which is an up and coming sport, something that is really not going anywhere. It's here for good. We're really excited about that, those of us that play pickleball. But most importantly, our kids in particular win because of this. We put our kids in sports as, as, as parents, not because we think that they'll necessarily excel. Or they'll do, they'll go on to be, uh, professionals. Uh, we put them in sports because it teaches them how to win gracefully. It teaches them how to lose with pride. Uh, they become coachable. Uh, they become great teammates or good teammates. They learn how to be a teammate. Teaches them discipline. And if they're lucky enough, then they get to discover a talent. And I believe that this facility will help encourage that. Uh, it's another avenue for people to be able to play sports. Um, and it's something brand new. Uh, like I said, sports is about life lessons and this, this facility can improve those lives of children, uh, in the community. And I think that there should be as many sports options as possible, and this place can provide that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anna Zelser. If you're here, come on up. You'll have three minutes. Thank you. Just introduce yourself when you get to the microphone. Thank you.
Um, I'm Anna Zelser. I'm French. I just arrived in Dunwoody six months ago. And I'm just for everything that can allow the community to grow. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Adam Leish. You'll have three minutes. When you get to the microphone, please just introduce yourself and go right ahead.
Hello, uh, my name's Adam Leish. I live on Lake Springs Way. I've lived there for twenty years and we back right up to the JCC. So I don't mean in the neighborhood. I mean like right next to the J. So you could throw a tennis ball from my deck and hit their gym. Great neighbor, never had any issues with them. Uh, the tennis courts are right near my house. I'll be completely honest. I've lived there twenty years and I've never once said, gosh, I wish they would stop bouncing that ball or gosh, the lights are on. I don't even notice it. I've never, honestly, it's never even been a thought in my mind. Let alone a factor in anything. So, um, you know, there's no doubt in my mind, if they build any other outdoor facility. They'll take the same precautions and the same thinking that they've done with what they have now. Um, to Mr. Romanoff's point on the sports part of it, my kids grew up there playing sports, soccer, basketball, tennis, you name it. They have friends that play Jewish, non-Jewish. Girls, boys. I mean, it's such a huge fabric of our life. Parents too. We played sports there. Um, it's just a great part of the community and it, I can't imagine not having it there for these families in Dunwoody to go and have outdoor activities. I just think it's incredible. Um, and they're just a good neighbor. They do everything right. And if there's ever a problem, they, they'll handle it the right way and everything's thought out and everything is, you know, um, just done the right way and they're a great partner and I'm sure they'll work with you to, to to solve everyone's concerns, but it's, it's a no-brainer. I mean, pickleball is awesome. Old people play it, kids play it, men, women. It's like this sport that encompasses everybody. Um, so it's a, it's kind of a no-brainer. So that's what I have to say. Thank you.
Nancy Ekerson. Put your second, so if you'll say your name so I can get it right next time, please.
Nancy Edixon. Um, I have some prepared remarks, but I wanna say I live next door to the JCC to their day camp. And I couldn't have a more different experience than the person who just spoke. It is so noisy and so disruptive. All of my doctors have told me that I need to move for my mental and physical health. They don't talk to me. They dismiss every complaint I make. So it's not all roses. I also wanna say that at the SLUP meeting, I don't think there's anyone here saying, don't build the courts. People were just saying, please build them with regard for the neighbors. And I think that, that's what's been missing all along is that the neighbors need peace and quiet and light protection and protection from traffic and other things that go on. No one is really against the courts. But one thing I did wanna say was at the SLUP meeting, the commissioner spent a lot of time talking about um, a self-storage unit that needed a commercial zoning change that was next to a retirement home. And they were very concerned about the noise that it might make and they wouldn't approve it until the representatives went back and looked at moving the entrance to, uh, the self-storage. And yet I thought that would be good for the people who were worried about noise from the JCC, but there was no one here to speak to the, um, the self-storage unit, but there were a lot of people here and only one person spoke for this and everyone was speaking against it and everyone was speaking about noise. Everyone was speaking about something other than the actual physical courts. And, um, I think there are so many lawsuits out there now. All you have to do is Google pickleball, outdoor lawsuits. And I just think that the city needs to be careful and take precautions so that that doesn't happen here. That property values aren't, aren't lowered. People selling their homes where there's lots of noise are gonna take a lower price. We could end up with more rentals in a neighborhood than owner occupied, occupied homes. And I'm just concerned about that. But I do have to say that as far as I'm concerned, my experience living next to them has been about as horrible an experience as I can imagine. And I have my other neighbors are wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you. Eric Worshol.
Hello, my name is Eric Worshol. Uh, I'm a small business owner who actually here in Dunwoody. And I'm here to speak in support of the JCC. We actually moved here, my wife is here with me and my family about eighteen years ago specifically for the JCC. Uh, we put our kids there and we live in the neighborhood right off Meadow Lake, uh, Drive. So basically equidistant between the J and let's say, uh, Dunwoody High School and Vanderlin. And I have never heard any issues or have had heard any issues, um, uh, from a sound perspective respectfully, uh, in contrast to the last speaker. In contrast to, we've heard many times, uh, Dunwoody High School bans and sports events and whatnot. None of which has changed our course of life. The JCC has been just a wonderful experience for our family as a whole. Our kids grew up there. I have multiple friends of other religions and other cultures who actively to this day make use of the J. It actually says on the front of it, open to all. It's just been a wonderful neighbor as a whole to the community, to, uh, the type of lifestyle that everybody's able to have in the general community and the broader community. And we're just here to, uh, tell or to support the J and to let you know that from our perspective and, and the friends that we have in the community. It has been, the J has provided a wonderful resource and has been a good neighbor effectively for us. And we hope that continues on. I can tell you pickleball, everybody I know plays it and it is something that people just really enjoy bonding over and creating its own community of its own. And people, it's just gonna be a wonderful resource moving forward, I think, for the entire community. Thank you.
Thank you. Ralph Amiel. Are you here? Mr. Amiel. You'll have three minutes, sir. Just make sure you speak in the microphone.
I will try. Uh, my name's Ralph Amiel. I live at Stevens Walk. I've been a member of the, uh, MCJCC since I've been fourteen years old. My parents started it when it was downtown, started a member. The only time I've not been a member was when I spent four and a half years in the Navy. Um, I've enjoyed the amenities to the center, everything that it offers. My, uh, I participated in athletics, uh, and I was also a board member for a number of years. My children grew up at the center, both in athletics and teenage Jewish clubs with the Neighborhood Youth Organization. I was thrilled to see the plans of the center. It has improved our aquatic facility. I, I really believe that the pickleball with the increase in popularity will be a prized asset for the center. What I believe though, impairment importance is the JCC is a central place for adults and children to congregate in a safety environment and serve everyone in our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Howard Wertheimer. You'll have three minutes.
Good evening, Howard Wertheimer, Dunwoody. Resident for almost thirty years. Um, parks and trails build the community, I believe. Uh, they improve public health. They create walkability. They improve public safety. They improve property values. And I was a former board chair of the Ashford Dunwoody YMCA. I'm a member of the Marcus Jewish Community Center and I can attest that nothing but, uh, good things come from that organization and hopefully you guys will continue to support it. So thank you.
Thank you. Tom Simon.
Tom Simon Stevens Walk. As your ethics commitment states, serve others, not yourselves. Use resources and if, with efficiency and economy. Treat all people fairly and equally. Use the power of your position for the well-being of your constituents. Create an environment of honesty, openness and integrity. Do the right thing with regard to the SLUP. If you decide to approve it, that's fine, but just makes you take into consideration the noise, the lighting and the reasonable hours. Nancy Ekerson's home value may be going down, her sanity may be at stake. So please listen to what she has to say. Another interesting, I wasn't gonna mention this, but, uh, gentleman reminded me that the last meeting, I think the PATH Foundation, uh, they put in the paths throughout Dunwoody are the plans. And Greta De Maio said that many companies give them the PATH Foundation, the land that a path goes across. And that the company pays for the path that goes across their land. This would be a great opportunity for the JCC. If they get the SLUP, which it looks like they're gonna get. Why don't they step up and then pay for the path on the west side of Tilly Mill, the JCC side? If there's a path can be put on Tilly Mill. Have them step out like the PATH Foundation has said, many companies do. Put the path across their land. They're gonna get the SLUP anyway. This is two birds for them. And they're gonna be doing a, a good thing for the community as long as the SLUP protects the values and the sanity of many of the people. Thank you.
Thank you. Greg Adcox. Introduce yourself and you'll have three minutes, please.
I am Greg Adcox. Lived in Dunwoody since, I don't know, since nineteen seventy-two, so a long time. Uh, Dunwoody High School wasn't even a high school then. But I'm here to support, um, the trail, the plans for the bike, bike trails. What you guys have done so far has been fantastic. As a motorist, it's much safer for me to drive my car and pass somebody, a cyclist, when they've got a lane or a place to ride. As a cyclist, it's way nicer. Uh, to have a space to ride. As a homeowner, it makes the whole community more attractive, I think. As a walker, my wife and I walk. We love walking on the path. It's beautiful and really nice. And as a grandfather, I'm really looking forward to riding my bike with my grandchildren to the library and to the park. So I just want, I hope you guys can get it done before I'm too old to do that. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Steven Kendrell. You'll have three minutes. Just introduce yourself.
I'm Steven Kadrenell. I am an active participant at the Marcus Jewish Community Center and, uh, part of its lay leadership. Um, I first began enjoying this park, um, before there was an I-285 West or East. Um, back when it was just a ball field and a lake. Um, it has evolved tremendously over the years, thankfully, uh, as has this city. Um, it is continuing to evolve to best serve its community and its constituents. I think this is another step in that evolution. Um, I think they've proven to be a very responsible citizen. Um, and, uh, that they do hear their neighbors and, uh, they carry out their business in a very productive way. It creates, uh, value for the neighborhood. It creates community for the city of Dunwoody. Um, and I hope you'll, um, embrace its continued evolution.
Thank you. Joe Thieson. Introduce yourself. You'll have three minutes.
Yeah, my name is Joe Thieson. Uh, I live in Stevens Walk. Been there for twenty years. I'm a very active member of the JCC for twenty years.
Make sure you're speaking in the microphone. Thank you.
I go there all the time. But in this, today, I go there at least, uh, three times a week, year round. I used to play tennis until I had to have a knee replacement last year and hopefully soon I'll be doing some pickleball. The concern I have a little bit in some of the neighbors that live close by for the pickleball courts, we know they're gonna be there. But I think it's very important. They had an initial meeting where these two gentlemen made a presentation, which I was at. And I expressed my concern at that time, three major concerns. They need to make sure they have real good sound barriers. Uh, that at that meeting we were at, they thought the building in front, whether the the parking area would be sufficient. I do not think that will be sufficient for the Stevens Walk people. I think they're gonna need some sound barriers. Uh, the other thing, I think it's very important, the sound barriers, I go to, I go to Hilton Head at least two or three times a year. I go in this place called Palmetto Dunes and they have big tennis courts and pickleball courts. Pickleball courts can be very noisy. So I think they really have to take mitigation factors. And in fact, I mentioned that when I was there for that meeting. In fact, I think they should be required. JCC should be required to take mitigation factors, barriers. I don't think the trees are sufficient and that building's gonna be sufficient for the houses that are in the first and second row of Stevens Walk and some of the other houses. Secondly, I think they need to look at their hours. Uh, that limitations maybe up eight hours. I mean, the, uh, eight o'clock at night instead of ten o'clock at night. And the third thing is the lighting that would be appropriate. You know, that be sufficient there. So sound, number one. To take sound barriers, I think they should be required to have sound barriers around there. Cause there's gonna be a lot of sound. When there's a lot of pickleball players playing, and I'm an active tennis player for years too. And I used to play on the tennis courts back there too. There's a huge difference in sound between tennis, you know, in four or five, ten pickleball courts going at the same time. So I think they should be required to have sound barriers. I think they should closely look at the hours. Ten o'clock, I think is on the late side, should be limited to eight. And the other thing is the lighting appropriate to that place. I mean, have sufficient lighting. I hope to go over there myself. I mean, I, I plan on, like I said, another six months. Going from tennis to pickleball, uh, but those are major concerns I think they need to address.
Thank you. Richard Allen.
Good evening. Thank you. My name is Richard Allen. I live on Village Springs Run in the Heathwood subdivision. Uh, I'm here mainly to support, uh, the plans for the trail network. Uh, I'm an avid cyclist. I cycle not only for exercise and for fun, but I cycle to run errands as well. Uh, this morning I biked to the bank. I biked to the pharmacy to pick up a refill. Um, it's my preferred method of transportation for anything that I can do on a bike. And I greatly appreciate the fact that we have so many good bike lanes in Dunwoody now. It's far cry from the way it was ten or twenty years ago. Um, having said that, um, while I'm comfortable on bike lanes, my wife is not. Uh, and I, I know many people whose kids are not, or, or they feel like it wouldn't be safe for their kids. So a network of trails would enable a lot of people who are not comfortable biking on bike lanes on the road to be able to use the bike and get out of the car. Um, I don't have strong feelings about specific trails. I know I have some friends and neighbors here who uh, have some concerns about having trails right in their backyard and I can certainly understand that. But I do wanna support the concept of a trail network in general. Um, I also want to say that I'm been a member of the JCC for many, many years. Uh, and I fully support, uh, the plans that they have for expansion. Uh, but I also hope it can be done in a way so that it does not negatively impact the neighbors in terms of light or noise. Thank you.
Thank you. Alan, it's either Goldman or Goldwin. Come on up and introduce yourself, please. You'll have three minutes, sir.
Alan Goldman, twenty-two, twenty, Stevens Walk. I live directly where the sound's gonna be. Probably the most heard. And my issue is not the pickleball courts, but the sound abatement. Sound, 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 sound. You need to do something about abating the sound. I have no problem with, with the sound, having one, having many, that they must control the sound. Thank you.
Thank you. Brett Friedman. Introduce yourself. You have three minutes.
Hey, so my name's Brett Friedman. This is like a two for one for me because I came here to support the trails. Um, I didn't know that JCC was doing their thing. Um, or it was being presented here, but, um, I think in terms of trails, I love the concept and the idea of Dunwoody being connected by this fast network of trails. Um, right now I have eight-year-old, an eight-year-old, nine-year-old and two eleven-year-olds. And because the bike lanes are on the street, my wife, she fears if our kids were to get in a little accident, they'd end up in the street. So having a place where they can actually drive on the, right, right on the sidewalk on this trail is huge for them and for us. The other factor is the sidewalks in Dunwoody kinda suck. I mean, they're really small. And if you're walking a dog and someone's walking by, you kinda have to walk to the side and like let the biker go. And then there could be like a utility pole in the middle of the sidewalk that you kinda have to veer around. Like it's just not very good setup. So if we can create a fundamental system that allows us to be better for everyone, I think it would be incredibly important. It, it would help our downtown or village thrive. It would help, um, people that wanna walk to the JCC kind of get out of their car and maybe just walk down there because I think the parking lot gets pretty full there sometimes. So I think just overall, it would just get us more outdoors, kind of like COVID time without COVID. Everyone was walking around. Um, in terms of the JCC, I love the JCC. My kids play sports at the JCC. We help, we're contribute to the JCC. Um, I think one of those things with Dunwoody is that, you know, you gotta find a balance of what provides the most good. And yes, there are probably some people that might be affected with some noise. Um, you know, some people already sound like they're affected with noise now. I mean, they're, I think their house values have gone up considerably with the JCC. If they're miserable now, they might not like the, the pickleball courts. You know, I don't wanna say anyone can move, but you're not tied to your house. And I think there's plenty of people that would wanna move in there necessarily and do it. But, you know, I think in terms of, um, the noise, I'm sure the JCC will do everything in their power to make it, to mitigate the noise. I know they wanna be a partner with the community. And I'm fully, fully aware that I think they will do everything they possibly need to do to make this a thriving center for everyone involved. That's it.
Thank you. Uh, Jared Powers. Okay, that's mine. Stan Schwartz. And Sharon, how are we on time? We're, we're good shape. Three minutes, sir. When you get to the microphone, introduce yourself and begin speaking.
Stan Schwartz, I, um, uh, have used the JCC for more than forty years, starting with it when it was on Peachtree Street. I literally used it today for two hours. I try to get there three, four times a week. I'm eighty-eight years old and I'm pretty good condition, thanks to the JCC. Um, I, I'm neutral, I guess I say, on what JCC is planning, but I want very much to be positive. Uh, there are many things that I have concerns over. You know, sound and just a whole bunch of things, but the, the one main thing I wanna talk about tonight and I'll hopefully be very short of three minutes. I almost didn't get here tonight because to- tonight or tomorrow is a Jewish holiday, Klagbaoma. And when I tried to get out of my driveway and out of the development at about twenty minutes to six, there were two lines of cars going in the direction of the JCC. One being the, the line that wanted to make a left turn to go actually in a facility and participate, enjoy the facility. The other one was a, was a bypass lane. People who wanted to get to Mount Vernon or other points further to the north and they were there trying to squeeze into the, the, the lane, which really isn't a full lane right now for them to be able to bypass it. So I had to use all my New York driving expertise, believe me, to try and make a left turn out of the development, which meant I had to go across these two lanes. And I had to make a turn. I almost got hit by a car. So my concern is traffic. I want very much that it be a very legitimate traffic control investigation, evaluation, and for there to be a light there. And if that is the case, I'll be that much more in favor of it. And the second one, very importantly, is that there not be a path on Tilly Mill Road. I'm very strongly against any path on Tilly Mill Road. We destroy many trees and the traffic will be horrendous. So those are my two issues. I made comments tonight, but I have several others, but I want the facility to be a great facility, which it is now. I helped build it back, uh, twenty-some odd years ago and I wanna continue participating and helping them be a viable Jewish community.
Thank you. That concludes this session of public comment. Thank you all for being efficient with your thoughts. Um, we will have a second session at the end, as well as a public hearing related to the SLUP in just a few minutes. Uh, with that, um, we have a proclamation which I am going to read. Because it is Bike Month. May is Bike Month. Um, whereas the bicycle is an economical, healthy, convenient and environmentally sound form of transportation and an excellent tool for recreation and enjoyment of Dunwoody's scenic beautiful, beauty, and it is the most beautiful time of the year right now in Dunwoody. And whereas throughout the month of May, the residents of Dunwoody and its visitors will experience the joys of bicycling through, through events or by simply getting out and going for a ride. Through events or by simply getting out and going for a ride. And whereas Dunwoody's road and trail system attracts bicyclists every year, providing economic health. Economic health, transportation, tourism, and scenic benefits. And whereas creating a bicycling friendly community has been shown to improve citizens' health, well-being, and quality of life. Growing the economy, attracting tourism dollars, improving traffic safety. Supporting student learning outcomes and reducing pollution congestion and wear and tear on our streets and roads. And whereas on May first, twenty twenty, Dunwoody's Vulnerable Road Users Ordinance took effect, the first of its kind in Georgia. Providing additional protections for cyclists, pedestrians, and others from potential dangers. And whereas Dunwoody's experiencing all-time record numbers of people and families out together enjoy. Experience the joy of riding bicycles for recreation and fitness. Whereas Bike Walk Dunwoody, the League of American Bicyclists Parks and Recreation Departments, Police Departments. Public Health Districts, Hospitals, companies, and civic groups will be promoting bicycling during the month of May twenty twenty-three. And whereas these groups are also promoting greater public awareness of bicycle operation and safety education. In an effort to reduce collisions, injuries, and fatalities, and improve health and safety for everyone on the road. And whereas the city of Dunwoody has adopted a complete streets policy. To provide a network of streets and paths that offers connectivities for all users and supports the city's commitment to sustainability. Now, therefore, I, Lynn Deutsch, Mayor of Dunwoody, do hereby proclaim. May twenty twenty-three is Bike Month in Dunwoody, and I urge all residents to join me in this special observance. Thank you. Um Tom Lambert, Councilman Lambert, you're up.
Hello, Mayor and Council. It's been a while since I've addressed this body from this position, but I thought it would be a little easier for the presentation. Uh and for the public to do it from here. Um I'm here tonight. Uh as you're aware, I served as the chairman of the. Citizens Advisory Capital Improvements Committee. Uh that committee has completed its work. Uh so I'm here tonight to present the final report and recommendations of the committee. Some of uh what I'm gonna go through uh tonight will be. Review for the council. Do you have a slide up? I can't. Okay, so is the overview slide up? I'm sorry, I'm not used to seeing.
No, well, the next one you need to the overview slide is next, but we. Can you, do you have any control? I think enable editing. Okay, so you see the enabling editing button above the City of Dunwoody slide. Just exit out where it says protective view. And what will that do? Will the computer implode? Okay.
That's wrong presentation. Trying to make this better. I'm trying to make it so it's in presentation mode. Okay, while that's coming up, I can speak. Uh so just, uh I wanted to provide an overview. I think the mayor and council are mostly familiar with this, but for the benefit of the the public that may not. Uh the uh the uh committee has met for nine months. Uh it was formed uh back in September, uh met for nine months. Uh basically, as we may all remember, in our retreat in twenty twenty-two, going back fifteen months or so. We emerged from that with a priority of addressing some of the capital needs of the city. And after that, we held over a dozen public engagement meetings. And after those meetings, it was decided that we needed uh some more input from our citizens before we made some of those very important decisions. So the Citizens Capital Advisory Committee was formed. Um each council member nominated one person that was on the final committee. And uh that uh committee ultimately consisted of nine citizens, uh chaired by a non-voting council member, which was myself. Uh this ad hoc committee. Are are you guys seeing anything on the slot on? Okay. The committee was tasked with developing a priority list of capital projects to address the needs of the city of Dunwoody. And really what they were told is to tell us what is most important.
Like, sorry.
Would you like me to jump on really quick and try to get it up for you, sir?
Well, he got it. He's got it now. Thank you, the ginger. We got it. Okay, go ahead.
So uh they were tasked with uh. Uh prioritizing what were the most important projects for the city. They were not told, they were not limited to a specific number of projects or anything like that. Just just to let the city know what was most important to the citizens. Uh the committee was primarily focused on three categories, parks, transportation, and trails, but. Ultimately, everything was on the table. If there was something that was not on a list that we had, they were uh welcome and encouraged to bring that up in the meetings. And overall, the committee evaluated well over a hundred projects. So this was uh no small task. Uh at all. Um we we, the committee did, however, were were asked not to consider a few things. First of all, is the cost. Or the funding mech- mechanism of those projects. Uh what we wanted to know was what what was most important, and we didn't want them to be limited. By thinking about how to pay for that. That's ultimately mayor, council, and staff's job. And then also uh not considered were maintenance project, maintenance projects such as street paving and things like that. Uh I would like to take a moment right now just to thank the nine committee members. Uh they did an outstanding job. They took their job seriously. I don't think they had any idea what they signed up for when they did it and how much work it was going to be. But each one of them took their role seriously. Uh they did their homework. There was a lot of homework assigned, included field trips and going out and looking at things and physically seeing things and making decisions. And they they all took the job very seriously, and um I believe did a really good job uh making these final recommendations. So. Real quick, here are the the meetings. Uh the the committee met six times. Um and here are the meetings we had. Uh we spent dedicated a meeting to each of the three categories, transportation parks. And trails. Um at the trails meeting, it was decided that the that was originally in October. And at that time, of course, we had just. In the very early stages of developing our master trail plan with the PATH Foundation. So the the committee, I think wisely decided that it was a little premature to make a recommendation on trails. Since we weren't sure what that trail plan was going to say. So they decided to adjourn until that was done. However, we did. Meet one more time after that meeting and had a preliminary discussion on trails, but we met one more time while the parks. And transportation projects were fresh in our mind to come up with a list uh of what were the most important projects from those categories. Uh that was actually presented to uh council in November of last year. And I will briefly review that at the end of the at the end of this presentation tonight. Um after the PATH Foundation made their presentation to to council, uh the committee reconvened uh one final time. Uh on April twenty-seventh to evaluate the trail projects. So what I have here. Um just real quickly, uh the committee evaluated uh trail segments from the PATH Foundation. Um in the master trail plan, as well as any trails that were currently on a city of Dunwoody project list. Um and they had also had the option of adding trails to this. Um to this list. So if there was something, a trail segment that they thought was important that didn't exist anywhere, they had the option of adding that as well. So here is the list of project recommendations from the. From the committee. I'm gonna run through this really quick, and then I'll spend a little bit more time on each. Uh just explaining what what they. Those projects entail. Uh the first is the Mount Ro- Mount Vernon Road Corridor, uh the Dunwoody Villas Corridor. Uh Shambly Dunwoody Road, North Peachtree Road. Georgetown Comm Street Connector. Uh the Perimeter Center Trails. Uh West Nancy Creek Greenway, and ultimately, they agreed with uh PATH's Phase Two Implementation Plan as well. So I'm gonna just pull up a map here, which I think would be helpful to describe, to go through these projects. Uh so real quick, the Mount Vernon Corridor. Uh basically, I I although we didn't rank number one through. You know, what was most important, which which was least important, this certainly, I think, had the most gravity with the with the committee. They felt that this was a very important project. For the committee, one committee member described it as the barbell effect, where you have the village on one side. And you have the the Williamsburg Shopping Center at the other by Jet Ferry. And all of the neighborhoods in between utilizing Mount Vernon Road as a relatively flat and easy-to-travel ridge road. Uh that connects to a number of neighborhoods, both north and south in Dunwoody. It just seemed like a natural place to to really put a priority uh for putting a trail, and that would really connect the community to each other. And to uh to those destinations. So that was uh one of the top priorities. Uh and that consisted of on uh that's right here on the map. That consisted of trail segments N ten and then eleven, which were recommendations in the PATH Foundation. As well as um existing city projects P two and P three, which are more on the eastern side of Mount Vernon. Uh the other project that really resonated deeply was the Dunwoody Village Corridor. Uh going essentially up Shambly Dunwoody and then continuing along Roberts, basically from Womack Drive through to Dunwoody Village. Up to uh. The soon-to-be-named, currently named Roberts Drive Park. Uh hopefully, we'll have a new name for that by the end of the evening. Um there was also um. Thought that uh. They liked the idea of continuing that up to the border with Sandy Springs all the way up. There's another segment N four. But but the priority was given to connecting the park to the village. Down to Womack and the library, uh and also again, connecting all those neighborhoods in between, having access there. Um the other section uh that they they liked was uh just Shambly Dunwoody Road, basically continuing it all the way down to. To basically the Georgetown area um from Womack South down to the Peeler. Um Peeler Road intersection, Schallford Road intersection, uh that there was a a. Important north-south connection, the committee thought there, and connecting Georgetown up to the village. North Peachtree Road, that's uh we'll head over towards the east side, although that's identified as a central trail. Uh but basically uh from. Two eighty-five up to Brook Run Park. Uh what what the committee thought was value there was the fact that there were two schools with a lot of students that walk. And having a safe way for those students to walk to school was considered a priority. Uh they also liked the fact that it connected to the city's flagship park at Brook Run. Um and then the bonus plan was it it's a. It's a gateway into the city off of two eighty-five, and if you're coming from Shambly, the city of Shambly. Um into Dunwoody, uh up North Peachtree Road, it's a gateway into the city. And also, there's an opportunity to connect to the city of Shambly. Uh's trail system in the future as well, that there uh Shambly is also working on a a trail network, and that would. Provide connectivity to that city. So those are the reasons. That project had some priority with the committee. Uh the Georgetown Comm Street Connector, that's over here, that's W four. That basically uh that's one of the Comm Street projects. Uh that would connect from Shambly Dunwoody through essentially the North Springs neighborhood. Over to the uh the gate, the the Greenway Trail, uh W three. So uh that was, they liked the idea of connecting. Basically, the neighborhoods here over towards the perimeter area, and that's what they thought that would be a good uh connection for that. Uh the Perimeter Center Trails. We did have one committee member that basically put every every perimeter center trail on the list and. Um we had a little bit of a discussion as committee, and if you put everything on the list, you haven't really prioritized, so. Uh but but just wanted to emphasize that the perimeter, they thought was an important area for the city to invest in trails. Uh so once we started drilling down a little bit. To figure out what what was most important, I think the committee really identified the Ashford Dunwoody uh perimeter trail. Uh or the uh commuter trail, I'm sorry, which is, are these segments here P six and P seven, basically. From the mall all the way up to Mount Vernon Road and obviously servicing everything in the perimeter area. Along that corridor, as well as connecting the perimeter area to Dunwoody Village was was what they saw as a priority there. Um. Another uh segment that they thought they that the committee liked was, and actually, I'm gonna click to the next slide for these next two. Uh is the uh the Greenway Trail, the W three uh. A recommendation in the PATH Foundation. Uh the the comments of the committee were that. One committee member liked the fact that this didn't actually go through people's front yards, and it was a more of a greenway, a linear park. Um and and didn't have as much of an impact on individual homes. Um people like the fact that the residents that live in the perimeter area would have. A linear park and a trail to use, uh as well as the people that office work there. And one of the members really liked the fact that it also connected over to the Georgetown side, over to Nancy Creek and and gave people in those neighborhoods access as well. So that was that was that portion. And then the final recommendation was PATH's Phase Two, which is highlighted in blue on this map. Um a lot of these segments have already been covered in the other areas. The ones that have not yet. Are W seven, which is the one down here by Ravinia. Uh W eight, which is over here, Hammond, connecting over into Sandy Springs. And E four, which is another Comm Street and uh continuing the Peeler Road, which basically connects the Winter's Chapel area all the way over to Brook Run Park. And this is, obviously, if you look at that, that's that. East-west connection across the city, but also. Those connections to outside of the city as well. There was a lot of excitement about, uh especially in the perimeter area. Have any opportunity to connect to PATH four hundred and down to Belt Line eventually. Of course, some of these projects outside of the city are dependent on other. Uh organizations doing their work as well, but uh that is something that is planned. So that is ultimately what the. Uh committee. Uh came up with with. Trail recommendations. Um. I'm just gonna just real briefly, since it was about five or six months ago that we were through the other ones, I'll just throw this back up there. Uh these are the park project recommendations of the committee um. Uh to turf that middle school, uh the the field at Peachtree Middle School. To uh rebuild the Brook Run Maintenance Facility, which is also used for uh public works as well. Um implement or I'm implement the Roberts Drive Park Plan. Uh the improvements at Waterford Park. Uh the acquisition of green space. And then additionally, uh specifically building a softball complex. Um implementing the Vermech Park Plan. The Dunwoody Cultural Arts Center Parking Lot Repaving. Uh Splash Pad at Brook Run is what they had asked for. Uh Brook Brook Run uh playground replacement, and they they. Talked about the indoor batting facility, but that's a project that is probably gonna be a Dunwoody senior baseball project, not necessarily a city project, even though it's city property there. And just to recap on the transportation projects, um to complete the sidewalk improvement plan. The Shambly Dunwoody Road Traffic Easing, uh that intersection down there at North Schallford, Peeler, and Shambly Dunwoody. And just to to clarify, the the job of the. Committee was not to come up with the solution, but just to identify the problem when it came to transportation problems. So they didn't. They didn't decide what to do there, but they identified that as a problem area. Uh the other was the other side of Mount Vernon up there at uh. At uh the intersection of Mount Vernon and Shambly uh Dunwoody Road, right there in the village. Um Mount Vernon and Tilly Mill Intersection Improvements. And Mount Vernon Road Left Turn Lanes at Dunwoody Station and Trail Ridge Drive. So ultimately, they whittled down this project, uh if depending on how you count them, uh down to about twenty-four, I think was the final number. Um of projects that they consider to be important for the city. And that should be prioritized above the others that were currently on our list. And um as we know, at our. Retreat this year, we discussed. Some capital projects. And some recommendations were made based on the. The committee's work and final recommendations. I will readjust that list. It'll largely stay the same, and I'll forward my recommendations based on the committee's work. To the mayor and council for consideration. At a future meeting. So I will go back to the seat where I'm far more comfortable.
Okay.
If there's any questions.
You can answer him up here.
You can ask me up there. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Does anybody have any questions? Catherine.
Just a comment. Uh each of us up here got to appoint a resident to serve on this committee, and the neighbor that I appointed, Marissa Smith, was very pleased. With this process, so I appreciate Councilman Lambert's efforts here. She felt that he did not push an agenda, that he listened well, that he guided the committee. And they came out with a good work product, and this was her first opportunity to serve the city formally and a great experience. So thank you.
Yes, thank you, Tom Stacy.
Just one clarification on the trail project recommendations. Those were not in any order, right? You said it was just, or was it kind of a consensus or?
Correct. It was it was how we did it. It was a consensus vote. Anyone could nominate a a a trail segment or project. And then and then we would discuss it as a group. And then at the end of the evening, we had a basically a big whiteboard. And the committee voted what to keep on the whiteboard, what to, we did cross a few things off at the end of the night that. Some people may have nominated that others felt were not as important, and the committee decided as a group, okay, we can leave that one off.
Vales. Just as a reminder, I mean, we haven't adopted any plans, but when we adopt plans as opposed to a specific project. The plan is a plan, and then as we get to pieces of the plan, everything goes through a. A process of public meetings, neighborhood meetings, public input. Engineer, we don't, we don't engineer anything until we're close to being able to build it. It's because engineering itself is expensive. And design is expensive, and so this, even the list y'all came up with. And design is expensive. And so this, even the list y'all came up with is more than ten years worth, easily more than ten years worth of projects. So it's something to keep in mind that projects take time. Okay, anybody else? Okay, thank you, Tom. I'm going to move four to three because I want to, Richard, so that people can leave. Richard, is he here? I can't see really impaired. Unless anybody objects and no one does, just to make these introductions is fine. And then Eric, you can do the report.
Yeah, with Shane Peoples just leaving last Wednesday, I wanted to introduce.
And just to be clear, we didn't know that. Council didn't know. So just. Yeah.
Yes. Yes, he he got out of enforcement. So he's working to put people into work from jails and homeless. So more power to him. So I want to introduce Robert Adely and Mihai Palong. Robert is from the city of Atlanta, has tremendous experience. And Mihai is from country of Romania. He's a former professional soccer player. So I want you both to welcome them.
Thank you all very much for joining our team here. We look forward to getting to know you and we appreciate you service to our community. And is there a third person as well or not yet?
Sharon, who's.
Oh, was already here. Right. Sharon was already here. Okay. We appreciate y'all's service to our community and we look forward to working with you. Thank you. All right, now, Mr. Linton.
Thank you, Mayor. And and I echo y'all's comments. I'm glad we got the new coded officers. We'll miss Shane. He did a great job for the city. And but you know, like Richard said, we really couldn't talk him out of making his, he'd already made made his decision. And but did a flawless job for us. The first thing I want to talk about tonight is our new opening of Two Bridges Park. We did open that on Saturday and it's a it is a for those of y'all in the public who haven't had the chance to go by there, please go by that park. It is it is a great amenity right here in the perimeter area. I want to thank the council for your vision on that and and persevering to get the funding. I know we had, you know, special funding for that. That project, it was part of our the COVID, some COVID funding to get that project complete, but we also bought the property in three different portions over the years. Some from DeKalb County, some from the development that was there. And also the there was a remnant track of residential property. It was part of that park as well. So it all came together to a beautiful facility right here in the perimeter area. And Brent, thank you and your staff for having a host and a great event this weekend. And then Jennifer and her team did a did a phenomenal job getting the PR out. As y'all can see, I'm rambling with this. I just want I can't say enough good things about the staff and how and the job they do for the city. And I always want the citizens to realize the commitment that they have from a staff with the city of Dunwoody. Also, the the Waterford Park, the bathroom construction is complete there. Also, the construction documents for a new for the Veterans Memorial at Brook Run Park will be completed this week and there's some new things coming in that area that we'll go over with y'all at a later date. And then the demolition is completed, the art center and the grading has begun for the facility expansion. So here again, those are major projects within the Parks Department. We had the DeKalb County Special Olympics went went very well. The department hosted the soccer skills and the bocce ball. That was there was a press release on that as well. For y'all to see, the new poles and netting were installed along the North Peachtree Road to stop home run balls from being hit into the street. And that was something new that we discovered in that park. So we went ahead and had that addressed. And then the staff completed the grading and siding of Peachtree Middle School Football Field. So here again, Parks is very busy. Public Works Perimeter Center West at Crown Point Parkway, the turn lane and path construction is ongoing, is upcoming event there with perimeter CID project. Also, the public comment period for sidewalk concept design on Shambly Dunwoody Road at Oak Point Place. Dunwoody Club Drive, Happy Hollow Road, Perimeter Center East, Peeler Road, at Equestrian Way and Happy Hollow Road. That's ongoing as well, coming up. The Dunwoody Road Sidewalk Project continues to go. Right now, there's actually a picture in your packet there showing this gas line. There's utilities everywhere in the city and we had to support this gas line with an I beam to go across there just for something simple, you know, it was sidewalks and we have to go through all these different, these different aspects to get these projects done. And same with the Shambly Dunwoody and Womack intersection that continues to be underway there. Pavement resurfacing that is started now and hitting the neighborhoods. Some of the neighborhoods this month, they'll be here in two phases now. And then again, later in the summer, they'll come back and complete the work there. We do have the same contractor we've had for several years. They rebid it. Or got or won the bid again this year and very good. We've been very happy with their performance on the streets. Also, stormwater pipe rehabilitation at Welton Place is now complete. And just so y'all know, we've done about thirty-seven hundred feet of pipe relining using the ARPA funds as part of this project. Here again, it's one of those infrastructure things you really don't see until there's a problem. The the department also completed sixty-nine stormwater roadway sign and signal work orders within the past reporting period. Trees Atlanta announced they planted fifty-four trees in the city front yard tree program. The program, the department will continue this program in the fall. We did have the new grand opening or open to the public, the Buffalo Wildwing at the other end of the mall. Very cool in terms of their restaurant and they have the second story, the balcony view. When whoever has the opportunity to go up there, please go and look at the the views of the city. It's kind of fun to go up there at five o'clock and see all the traffic. You can watch everything. It's pretty cool. The the planning and zoning division will submit the green communities recertification application by the end of this month. And the business license division has completed the twenty twenty-three renewal season. Economic Development, we did have the Ashford Lane Public Art unveiling. Was that, I guess it was last week, May first. Here again, I'm going to draw everybody's attention to that. If you get an opportunity, please go over to Ashford Lane and on the parking deck that's been there. Kind of near where the old Outback was. Everything's changed over there now and you have a nice mural on that parking deck. Placemaking, we continue to work on placemaking. We did, we did hold the Dunwoody's Annual Asian American Pacific Islanders Heritage Celebration at Ashford Lane. So a lot of activities always occurring in the city. Working with two artists to install a mosaic on the retaining wall at Shambly Dunwoody Road at Womack. And we also have working with the perimeter CID and MARTA on the large scale mural at the Dunwoody MARTA Station, and that's underway already. They had pressure washed the building, put the kind of base coat on there and now that's starting as well. Under Communications, Lemonade Day City Tent was a big activity during that time period. Many visitors came by there. And also Jennifer and her department do a great job with pressure releases. You can always keep up there for openings like the Two Bridges Park, the paving plan, and everything is always within that website. As part of the city. Other highlights, we did have the on April twenty-second, we had our prescription drug takeback initiative collecting about two hundred pounds of drugs for disposal. And we also continue to do our distracted driving detail. We did that on April twenty-seventh. More than seventy citations were issued, fifty-four for hands-free violations. And then, of course, there's whenever you pull people over like that, you do come up with other activities. There were some drugs seized during that time as well. The police report is very intense. Please read that at your leisure. The Finance Department, in conjunction with the HR Department, kicked off the next internal audit, which is payroll and processing audit. And we also have the monthly financials can be found within the report. There's a link there that's available to the public as well. Municipal Court, we do have our amnesty program coming up. We mailed over five hundred letters to defendants in failure to appear status. And that's an event that I've encouraged the courts to do every year. Just that for to anybody who has is behind on their court dates or missed a date. They can seek amnesty and just come in and pay their fines without having to run the risk of being pulled over in another jurisdiction. Because you have a warrant out for your arrest based on a non-show or failure to appear. So that's a very good service we provide to the city. Not just to the city residents, but anybody who has a outstanding issue with the Dunwoody City Courts. But anyway, with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that y'all may have.
Questions, John.
Eric, thank you for the report. Very detailed. Thank you to the staff. Thank you for everybody who did all the hard work. This report is overwhelming. When you said the police report to read it at your leisure. I think Dunwoody citizens really need to remember that we don't live in Mayberry. It is it is striking the details and the crime and the activity that is outlined in the police aspect in particular. It's the good, the bad, and it's the very ugly. And I'm thankful for the Dunwoody Police Department for all the work they do. And I know Deputy Chief Carlson is coming up later. I don't need an answer today or right now, but at some point, I'd love to get an update on where we are in staffing and his when he comes up at the end of the meeting, because I want to make sure that we're doing the very best we can to to put the ugly behind us. So thank you. I appreciate all that everybody does for the city of Dunwoody.
Okay.
So Eric, again, thank you for the great detail and writing for the public has access. If you're in the email blast, you'll get this email to you directly. So you don't even have to go bury that and find it in the agenda. The up in the public works, you this, there's you listed some other sidewalks. And you stated that's in the public comment period. How does that generally work? Because we talk about, you know, we have concept plans and then we come to do something, we're going to ask the public for comments. So what do we do in that example for just talk about how we're doing that with those upcoming sidewalks?
Sure. What we do, you know, we have the our portals open in terms of people can respond. And also there'll be other listening sessions, so to speak, to gather information from the public, gives the opportunity within the website to talk about those items from the public, anything that wants to be added to or taken away, so to speak. They can come in and meet with staff at any time. We're glad to meet with with any citizen in the office, you know, or on site. If there's an issue, we can kind of walk the program with them. We you know, from that standpoint, our staff's very involved, you know, with the public. So there's plenty of opportunities. I'll always say I'm always available to meet with somebody if they'd like to on a project or I can have the appropriate staff meet with them. But that's just one of the examples that we do on any project that the city brings forth.
Right, Eric. So for example, a few years ago, before I was on council, you did the new sidewalks inside the residential neighborhoods of Village Mill, right? And that was pretty much wasn't Steph basically going door to door and talking with each owner along that frontage? And it might be quote unquote in public right of way, but yet they were still working with every owner, right?
That's right. And that's an excellent point because even though it's in the right of way, you know, people still view that as their yard. Of course, they maintain it. They have flower beds, their mailbox, the grass, the yard, sprinkler systems and other things within that portion. So they're very sensitive on what may occur there. And each each case is different. For example, in the Village Mill piece, you know, that came out kind of organically. The neighborhood really wanted that that sidewalk in there. So that was a unique piece. It wasn't just the city saying, oh, here sidewalks coming. People wanted that and then we found a way to fund it.
Yeah, thanks. We just, again, it's how we inter engage with public when we're doing public, public, public project. So thank you.
Stacy. First, I just want to say thank you to the staff for the twin Bridgette, no, two bridges, I'm Two Bridges Park opening, one of the best days in Dunwoody in a long time. That was just thank you to Brett and the staff. Thank you to Jennifer and everybody who's out there. It was just so fun. Actually had to coach a preschool gymnastics class today and most of the kids had been to the park and they went to tell me what a great splash pad it was. They were so excited. I do have one quick question. And the information technology. It says park internet. A request for proposal has been posted. What what internet? What are we doing in the park with in terms of internet?
Sure, sure. That piece, that is something that came out of our retreat that we talked about, wanted to explore the opportunities to have Wi-Fi within the parks. And we're and we're looking at that and we actually had a meeting last week with a vendor as well as a side note. So we had the proposal out on the street to see what we can come up with. We also had had a meeting with a major vendor to say, hey, what are y'all's opportunities? The biggest, you know, we want to have Wi-Fi within the parks so people can have business there. And we have to find a way that it's not hooked into the city Wi-Fi. We don't want, you know, firewall issues and things of that nature. So we put it out to be a kind of a third party program that can be supported. We're also looking at other opportunities, how to pay for that. We may have some ARPA money that can pay for that initial infrastructure.
Catherine.
One question about the Veterans Memorial, the construction documents are almost complete. So when might we veterans expect a refurbished memorial?
Yeah. And Brent's going to come up and talk about that. And Brent, if you're comfortable, talk about the other piece of it as well. I'm not going to say any more than that to make sure I'm not spilling anything.
Excuse me. So the construction documents are due any day now. They're putting the final touches on that. As soon as we get them in our hand, we review them. We're going to put them out to bid. We'll have to do a thirty-day bid process. I would love to bring a contract award to you guys in July. I will have one meeting in June, so I will be able to get it back and and bid out and back in time for that. And then we're going to hit the ground running as soon as we get the contractor in place. It probably will not be completed by Veterans Day. I don't want to get that open dream out there, but it'd be will be well under construction. And so the community will be able to see quite a bit of progress by the Veterans Day event. And the other thing that Eric is mentioning is I will be bringing it to you at the next council meeting. Is we have an opportunity from a group of Vietnam veterans that want to fund and build a Vietnam War Memorial here in Dunwoody at Brook Run Park in the same area as the Veterans Memorial. It's a beautiful memorial. We have some very good concepts of what they want to do and they will be coming to the May twenty-second meeting to present that to you.
And Brent, on that piece there, that's privately funded.
Correct.
That portion is privately funded. And it's really unique. They'll enhance that area between the Veterans Memorial and the skate park. And the elevations are such where the Veterans Memorial that's there now is a higher elevation, have more prominence over the other piece, but it'll it'll all work together as one piece. So we're excited to present that to y'all next at the next meeting.
Anyone else? So I want it, and we don't have to talk about it tonight. I know that I met the I'm sorry, I met the new coresponder. I know he's just getting started. It didn't do a count, but at least a third to half of these calls were had a mental health connection. I just got back from a meeting with some federal officials and other mayors and this is a really, really big problem. So I look forward to our coresponder getting up and running and being able to support our police because that's what they're there for. So anyhow, thank you for this. And also Saturday was the best day ever in Dunwoody. Not only did we open a fantastic park. But it is within walking distance of literally five to six thousand people. Sometimes I exaggerate, but I am not exaggerating today. There is such density in the perimeter area as well as it actually connects to Georgetown neighborhood as well, but the real source of the population is the people in perimeter, which until Saturday did not have all this area didn't have any public green space. So fantastic job by everybody. The event was so well attended. The children and the adults and me were so, so happy. So it's awesome. So thank you all who were involved in that. And with that, Sharon, you are on whenever you're ready.
Mayor, the first item under public hearings is a first read of for slot twenty-three dash O two, a special land use permit for fifty-three forty-two Tilly Mill Road to allow an existing neighborhood recreation club and for the construction of new sports courts. Madeline Smith.
At this time, I'll reuse myself. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. So the first item I'll be discussing this evening is the request from the Marcus Jewish Community Center of Atlanta, the MJCCA. They're requesting a special land use permit to allow all of the existing permits on the, or excuse me, all of the existing improvements on the property to remain. And also we are specifically this evening considering the construction of new sport courts and that includes twelve pickleball courts and one multipurpose court. So a little bit of background, I'm sure you guys are all familiar with the MJCCA, but they've operated within the Dunwoody community since nineteen sixty-one. It was originally constructed when DeKalb was unincorporated. And at that time, DeKalb did not require a special land use permit for these types of uses to operate in neighborhoods. They also didn't require it for things like churches and schools. And so we do have a lot of those types of improvements in these neighborhoods that don't currently have a special land use permit, but whenever they come to us with a zoning action with a with a major expansion or improvement, we require them to go through this zoning action and to bring everything under the umbrella of the special land use permit, but there's always a trigger for that permit. And so again, this evening, that trigger is the construction of these thirteen new sport courts. But overall, the property is zoned R dash one hundred. But overall, the property is zoned R dash 100. It's surrounded by property that's all also zoned R dash 100. And it's in the suburban neighborhood character area. So this is highlighting their proposal on the right hand side of the screen. This is conceptual site plan. And so we are looking at 12 new sport courts. Eight of them are covered. And you can see that's the area that is labeled H1. And then there are four uncovered pickleball courts and then one uncovered basketball court. So overall, for the R dash 100 zoning district, the setbacks are 35 feet, 10 feet and 40 feet. On this property, the 35 foot setback is applicable along Tilly Mill Road. And then the 40 foot setback, which is the rear setback is applicable adjacent to the Dunwoody Glen neighborhood just south of the pickleball courts. So there is going to be. Not only a 40 foot setback, but the actual courts are constructed even further back than that. They sit approximately 80 feet from the property line. And any new structures that are built are beholden to our maximum height requirements. And in the R dash 100 district, that's 35 feet. And so that covered structure over the courts will meet that height requirement. And overall, the lot coverage for a institutional use such as a neighborhood recreation club. The maximum law coverage is 60% and they are well below that. However, this project, along with some other minor improvements that they're making on the property. Trigger stormwater mitigation. To be required. So that will be handled as part of the land disturbance permit process. Just a quick note about the other minor improvements on the property. They're making some changes to their existing pool. And they're also converting a portion of one of their ball fields to some additional parking. Additionally, the applicant has proposed noise abatement. So as you've heard this evening, pickleball is louder than tennis. And the applicant provided a noise study that showed that the closest neighbors, again, the Dunwoody Glen, which is directly south of this area. At the property line, there would be. A couple of decibels above the ambient noise level. So in order to abate that. Their sound consultant has proposed. These special types of sound barriers that have been proven to reduce the amount of pickleball noise. They, a sound consultant has recommended two options. One are is fencing that directly surrounds the court. And then the other option is fencing along the setback line. And both options, again, according to the sound consultant are appropriate and do a good job of attenuating. That noise from the pickleball courts. And so we've proposed a condition essentially tying them to one of these two options. So overall, in reference to our approval criteria for special land use permits, we do find that the expansion of outdoor recreation activities to be consistent. With the city's goal to enhance residential amenities, the MJCCA. Again, as you've heard tonight, is a really great, you know. Amenity to the community used by many different types of families in Dunwoody. Overall, the site plan is demonstrating compliance with all of our zoning requirements, including setbacks and lot coverage and height. And the lot can accommodate, you know, all of these improvements. Without encroaching into any of our setbacks and without, you know, having any negative adverse impacts on adjacent neighbors. You know, provided they are providing this noise abatement fencing. And on the right hand side, I've just provided an example of what that fencing looks like. Around these types of courts. So overall, the applicant has proposed hours of operation that are consistent with our noise ordinance, essentially our noise ordinance prohibits noise between the hours of 11:00 PM and 7:00 AM. And their hours of operation are consistent with that. And again, provided they're. Provided they include these noise abatement strategies. We don't anticipate any adverse impacts. And additionally, our. Our lighting regulations and the styles and types of lightings that are on the market today. Are significantly improved over sport court lighting of the past. So. The combination of those two things, we don't anticipate any negative impacts from lighting. So overall, we are recommending approval of this request subject to five conditions. In the PowerPoint, I've highlighted condition number three, because since the report has been published. We've worked with the applicant to tweak the language a little bit. So I just wanted to make that really clear in the presentation this evening. But overall, the condition. Ties the applicant to the conceptual site plan and elevations that they've submitted, which is one of our standard conditions. The second condition is requiring them to maintain a minimum 40 foot buffer of their existing tree canopy along the properties. Along Dunwoody Glen. So again, that's south property line. And then the third condition is requiring them to provide the noise abatement fencing. The fourth requirement is to not have a public announcement system except. For use for emergency situations. And then the fifth criteria is related to their hours of operation. Which range from 7:30 AM to 10:00 PM at the earliest and the latest, and they have different times for, for different days. And you can see those listed here on the screen. If you guys have any questions this evening, I'd be happy to answer them.
Okay. Well, first we have a public hearing, so I'm going to open this public hearing unless I see an objection. Seeing no objection, the public hearing is opened. We'll hear from the applicant now. Is that correct, Sharon? Oh, oops. Can I rescind my opening of the pub? I'm rescinding my opening of the public hearing. Sorry. And so we will now hear from the applicant, then we will have the public hearing. Sorry.
Thank you, Mayor Joyce. Members of the council and Kathy Secret with Smith, Kim, Berlin, Russell. And I represent this applicant and have represented this applicant for a number of years. In fact, when we were in Dunwoody and living here, my daughter, and we are not Jewish. Attended the preschool, the summer camps and was on the swim team. At the J, as it is affectionately referred to, and it was an incredible asset in my view to this community. As a member of the Dunwoody community, when my daughter had the benefit of being able to go there. We are a 50.44 acre tract in total. It's a good sized tract. And not only do we not exceed maximum lot coverage, we are well, well below it. The maximum lot coverage, as you just saw, can be up to 65%, I believe. Or I'm sorry, 60% and we will be at 33.36% after this construction. So we are not trying to cram too much on the site. To the contrary, we're actually taking down a barn and an area that used to be used as stables and a couple other play areas. So we're pretty well staying within the existing footprint of the entire development. And that as a consequence will not increase our impervious limits. We are proposing 12 pickleball courts, and I want to make sure everybody's aware that eight of those will be covered. Four will not. And I think Madeline said that the multipurpose court was not going to be covered, and that is not correct. It will be covered as well. It is actually the structure which sits closest to Dunwoody Glen. That will be the multipurpose court. Pickleball courts are on the other side. And I actually brought with me. A sample of the material that is used as a sound barrier, so you can get an idea for the color. It can blend in. A little bit nicer than some of the bilious green we've seen on other or blue on other sound barriers. And the way we got to this situation is this, we knew after we met with neighbors. And we held one meeting completely on our own with Dunwoody Glen that wasn't required by anyone. And then, of course, the meeting that is required by your code to meet with other neighbors within 500 feet, and that's what your requirement is. So we understood fully that people were going to be concerned about noise and lights predominantly. And went to the trouble before the planning commission hearing of actually doing a noise study. I learned at, I've played two games of pickleball my entire life, so I did not know this. Pickleball noise apparently is worse than tennis. Apparently there's something with the thwack of the ball, which is a higher pitch and resonates higher. And apparently people scream more when they're playing pickleball. Do not ask me why. Could be because you fall when you're older and that's what we're playing. That was certainly my experience. But in any event, that is a different noise level. And the first study that we had done, we allowed the acoustician, I guess is the proper way to pronounce it. To come out and measure the Dunwoody gun property line, but essentially at the rate of what the basketball court would generate. His reasoning was that that was probably higher noise. And that if it did not have an impact, given that it was between the property line and the pickleball courts. We would be fine and concluded that in fact, there would be no adverse impact. When I made this revelation at the Planning Commission. And it was brought to my attention that there were still a great deal of questions about pickleball noise itself and how it would be controlled. We went back to the drawing board. This is something I promised the planning commission we would do before we came to you. And we wanted to also do it sufficiently in advance of your hearing so that you would have the study. Unfortunately, the first one, we couldn't get until a day or so before planning commission, which made it more difficult because everybody was trying to. Read it at the last minute, which was our fault, not anybody's fault in the planning commission. But as a consequence, he went back out and he actually measured pickleball noise. At the Sandy Springs Tennis Center. I didn't realize they had pickleball courts. He conducted actual studies of active courts, same kind of numbers, same kinds of hours of operation. And got measurements and was able to determine what those levels are. And when you are doing a noise study, you first of all determine what kind of noise is generating from your source that you're studying. That kind of makes sense. Then what you do is you go to your nearest property line and you set up a measuring device at that property line. And the goal is to see whether the new noise will exceed what is called the ambient noise, which is the background noise, as you all probably are aware. And if it goes more than five DBA, which is the scale in which it is measured. Over that ambient background, it is considered an impact that needs to be addressed. And we in fact found that at that property line, there would be a, an impact at least approximately up to that five DBA level. So we then sending back with the task of please come up with a plan which will enable us to eliminate that. Or reduce it at least beyond the ambient level so that there would be no further impact at the property line. And I think that's an important point to make. Because the property line we're talking about backs up to Dunwoody Glen. And if I'm not mistaken, is. Approximately 75 feet from the basketball point and 160 feet from the pickleball court. So you got some distance there. And you've also got a fairly substantial tree buffer there. So we went back and took a look at all of that. And came up with this idea of how we could control it at one of two places. And that would be as the A and B options that you just saw in the plan. And either one is fine. I'm hoping that the staff, and I'm sure they will be, would be sufficiently accommodating that should, for example, this. Green thing not quite be available at the time we need it, that they would allow us to substitute. But I'm sure as well that as long as the purpose has served, that we would be able to do that. And I do want to point out that the only two folks who really expressed any opposition to this lived well in excess of property line limits. The, the woman who is having problems with noise, I believe from speakers is in back of the camp, which is the other end of the campus. The gentleman from Stevens Walk is over 400 feet away. So we feel like we have been charged with the task. Of going out and making sure we know what we're talking about, making sure we know we have a solution. And that we have done that in this particular circumstance. So we are perfectly happy with the staff recommendation and would ask that you accept that. With that said, let me go and answer a couple of other issues that were raised. In terms of what the issues might be here. And the first is lighting. I know you all are aware that it is possible to use controlled lighting footprint. That's not a new technology at this point. It's something that we've been doing for a number of years. It basically controls the angle of the light, so it focuses down and it does not spread. And we have committed to using that kind of lighting on this site as well. I don't know what you all are doing, to be honest. I know you voted on some pickleball approvals lately, and I don't know what kind of lights you've used. But regardless, we are committed to using the ones with the control footprint. So that should not be a problem. In terms of traffic, quite frankly, we expect a reduction. Right now, we are using pickleball courts on our tennis courts and it's interfering. Obviously with the tennis players, but it is also meaning that the people who want to use the pickleball courts are there now. And we anticipate that it will be the same people. We're really not trying to increase anything. We're just trying to make the experience a little bit better. But even if there is new traffic generation, it's like 57 vehicle trips in the morning and 40 in the evening. So it should be insignificant. According to all the authorities that deal with traffic generation and this kind of impact. I think our experience is that most people come to the JCC and, and do different things there. So they might go play basketball or they might go play pickleball, but oftentimes they're doing something. At the same time. So they'll go over to the pool and use it and then come in and work out or something. So a lot of our people are there for extended periods of time and we're not necessarily reflecting new trips here is the point that I'm somewhat inartfully trying to make. The last thing that, oh, no, not second to last thing I mentioned is the PA system. Again, because our neighbor near the, the camp has had issues according to her with. Loudspeaker noise. We did commit that we would not have the same loudspeaker system in operation on these courts. We will however, have one for emergency circumstances. We are a nonprofit. Corporation who unfortunately has security concerns, which I'm. Unfortunately, I'm sure we can all appreciate in this day and age. So we have to have the ability to deal with that kind of a possibility and be able to secure our premises should a circumstance like that arise. And that's the only circumstance I can think of, other than some kind of problem in a court, like someone getting sick or something like that. Under which those, that PA system would be used at all. And that brings me to the last point I wanted to make, which is. This is not about the path, folks. Whether you like the path, you hate the path, you want more trails, you want more off the street stuff. Whatever happens on Tilly Mill Road happens. We're a nonprofit corporation and we are built almost to the right of line of Tilly Mill now. And I don't think it is reasonable to ask us to both give that property and to then to spend the. Considerable amount of money it would cost to install that trail. I think the corporate entities that have done it have done it as iliacinary. Kinds of endeavors where they are getting a tax benefit for it. We do not, and we just don't have that kind of a budget available to make that kind of a commitment. And I don't know whether that even comports with the plans that you all were talking about for Tilly Mill. And my impression is it may not. It may be on the other side of the road, what is tentatively thought now. So the path here is sort of a, I call it a red herring. It has nothing to do with the viability of this request. And we would ask as a consequence. That you go ahead and approve it, subject to the staff recommendations. And if there are any questions I can answer, I will be happy to do that. You should have in your packets elevations because we want you to make sure you know what this stuff looks like. So hopefully those questions have already been answered for you.
Okay, now I'm going to open the public hearing. E, we are going to have 10 minutes. For those speaking in support of the application and 10 minutes for those speaking in opposition, we will just ask you to line up. If you've spoken already, you're welcome to repeat or not. But anyway, so I'm going to ask people who want to speak in for the application to stand up in the middle and one person, there's no order to this people. You just got to get up and speak. Sorry. Okay. Is no one speaking for the application? No one? Okay. All right. Seeing that no one is speaking for the application, I am looking for, if anyone wants to speak in opposition to the application. Please stand up in the center and just take your turns. We'll have 10 minutes. Okay. Okay. Just introduce yourself. We don't use cards for the sections.
Tom Simon, I just want to address the lady's comment with regard to JCC. Offering to put forth the path on the Tully Mill. The reason that was offered is because the originally, the path was for the west side and it was being designed for the west side of Tully Mill Road. Because one council member spoke. At the seven, 12, 21 meeting of the council. Subsequent to that, the path was moved from the west side, the JCC side to the east side. We've never gotten a correct answer as to why. That's why I brought that up. And secondly. It was brought up by the PATH Foundation that corporations, companies have offered to pay for. Or at least offer the property. Or the path. And if the city wants to foot the bill, that's fine because they're going to foot the bill one way or the other. We as neighbors on the east side of Tullamille. Do not want a path on Tullamille. But the obvious side, the likely side, as Michael Smith put forth initially. The Public Works Director, he said, it's the likely side. It has less obstructions. You're not going to kill a lot of trees. You're not going to cause a lot of problems for the neighbors. And that's why we put forth, or I put forth that, that comment. Because if JCC wants to continue to be a good neighbor. That would be something very nice for them to do since the original path was planned. For the JCC side, the west side. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak in opposition? Seeing none, I close this public hearing unless there's an objection. Seeing none, I close this public hearing unless there's an objection. Public hearings closed. Now we may ask discussion questions of staff or applicant. John.
Thank you. I guess Madeline, a couple for you if I could. I've read the application. Well, first, let me make a statement that I am very much in favor of the JCC. I think they're a wonderful facility. I think they serve the community in so many different ways. And I am in favor of the pickleball courts. Done, said, I'm in favor of the pickleball courts. That being said, I have some technical questions and I just need to understand the hows and the whys. First question, nowhere in the application do I see the word Berman Commons anywhere in the application, as far as I can tell, except for in the meets and bounds. It looks to me like twenty twenty-six Womack is part of the application. Is that correct?
The application, I believe, only references in in the application page, the, sorry, fifty-three forty-six Tilly Mill. So that's, it's a separate property.
So if I could get a concurrence from the applicant, that the Berman Commons is not part of the fifty acres? It is not part of the meets and bounds and it's not part of this rezoning?
Got to answer in the microphone.
Okay.
It is my understanding that there is a long-term ground lease of that property, which is completely separate and apart. I zoned that back when it was made, that home.
Yeah, a monastery, right? Park, I must say.
One of my finer moments. So I note that it was rezoned at that point in time and I suspect it is separate as a consequence.
Okay, so I'm just trying to understand. When I look at the meets and bounds, I'm reading Womack Road, Womack Road, which tells me that the Berman Commons is part of the application whereby, I'm not sure, looking at everything, and again, you have an assisted living facility that went in front of the city of Dunwoody in twenty twelve for a a slurper, sorry, the ZBA for a stream buffer variance. And at that time, the JCC called this an assisted living facility in their application. So how can an assisted living facility be part of a neighborhood recreation?
The preschool is the same way that all of the performance events are. And there was a great deal of discussion about that back at that point in time. Both in DeKalb, because it started in DeKalb, and then in Dunwoody, your ordinances were just then being drafted. And as a matter of fact, the first draft of your code, which I helped with, provided that a neighborhood recreation facility of more than fifty acres did not require a slurp. It was subsequently changed back. But that's my my recollection. Do you have a different understanding?
Are you can't, you have to answer in the microphone. Thank you.
My further understanding is that it was separately subdivided during its application. Transactionally, the fee is still owned by the Marcus Jewish Community Center, subject to a long-term ninety-nine year ground lease. Whether it is included in the meets and bounds, I haven't reviewed that, so I couldn't tell you. It doesn't sound like it is based on the acreage.
Okay, so again, I'm in favor of this. I mean, I can say it now. The public hearing is over. I'm in favor of the slurp with proper sound baffling and lights and all the rest. I'm worried about the the Berman Commons because of a slurper, because of the zoning action that happened in DeKalb or prior to Dunwoody. I am worried that including it in this rezoning then takes away any zoning protections that happened previously. I'm worried about those neighbors. I'm worried about other things. I think it's a separate item. This is a zoning issue for a neighborhood club. And it's a separate thing. So to me, it should not be in there. And based on the application, I'm worried on how it says it in the meets and bounds. And I'd love to see new meets and bounds. Please review whatever I'm talking about. But I want to confirm. It looks like it's your intention not to have Berman Commons in the application. And I just want to make sure that the application is very clear as to what is and what is not in the application.
Understood. That is the intent. We'll go back and review the meets.
Awesome. That is, that's really what I'm looking for.
An answer before your second.
That's basically what I had. So I I'm and there's, let me just confirm, there's no way for the pickleball to be installed without a rezoning or without the slurp at this point.
Correct. It has to have a special land use permit because it's a major, we consider it a major expansion.
Awesome. I'm happy with that. I'm just trying to make sure I understand the process and the technicalities and the application. And again, the meets and bounds, I don't want an undue application or an unintended consequence for a legal error when it comes to the identifying which parts of the property are under review today. Thank you.
Rob.
We'll start with staff, but the applicant may need to jump in. So I'm just going to ask some questions and get some clarification on some of the noise issues and just kind of share my thoughts. One is, you presented two different options for addressing noise abatement. Who will be making the decision on which option is selected? Would that be staff or applicant?
So when the applicant comes forward for their permitting for this project, it's essentially left up to them to choose which sound attenuation option works best for them.
My, I I will say, my preference is option A, where you wrap the courts themselves. I think that would be aesthetically more pleasing to the neighbors to the south. And my follow-up question would be, do we need to consider some sort of limited screening for neighbors to the east? You've got the building blocking a lot of that, but there is a portion. They did the noise study. What staff's thoughts on noise? I I don't know how far pickleball ball noise follows. The closest house by my quick measure was four hundred and fifty feet from the back of that that dance building there. You know, do we need to consider maybe putting a few panels on the parts that aren't protected by that building to keep the noise from going over there?
So our only consideration when looking at this was looking at the neighbors that were closest that we felt would be, you know, impacted by this. We do feel that there's sufficient distance between this improvement and properties across the street that we don't anticipate adverse impacts. But if we wanted to be able to measure those impacts to see what it would actually be like over there, we would need an updated.
Yeah, I I just, I'm not a noise expert. I don't know how much noise attenuates over, say, two hundred feet. But, you know, ten decibel increase is more than double the sound of noise. So it's it's a logarithmic scale, not a linear scale. So I just want to make sure we're looking at noise in that direction.
From the noise study, it says in there that over two hundred and fifty feet is not a major noise impact.
Okay.
The closest house on the other side of the street is four hundred feet plus.
Right. So then my second question, I guess, this kind of opens up to me up the the greater issue of noise on this site. And we've heard there are some neighbors that have noise issues right now that are unaddressed. So this addresses potential noises that could occur. Is there anything that can be done to address existing noises that are occurring? Could these acoustic panels be used to screen out, for example, around the the camp area in Lake Springs Drive where we're getting some noise issues?
I I don't know per se. We didn't study the noises.
I I'm just sharing that as as a broader comment. And then that kind of leads into the condition number four, which is the PA system. So is that requirement specific to the PA for this location or is that an installation wide restriction on use of the PA system?
It's intended to be specific to the new sport courts. And then additionally, to address your your previous question regarding the Lake Springs Drive property. So code enforcement has been out there to measure the sound, but the the type of sound at that property line. So our noise ordinance only covers a certain way of measuring sound. I think it's like DBA. But, you know, based on Ms. Etchison's, you know, research and her experience, the type of sound is different. And that's not the type of sound that's addressed by our noise ordinance. And so we don't have an enforcement mechanism.
I guess I'm I'm just asking a general question then. You know, they're looking at acoustic panels. It's probably overstepping what can be done here. I'm just asking the question out loud. It's an existing noise issue. Could something be employed there? Could restrictions on the PA system be employed to address noise issues that are already occurring elsewhere? It's not maybe necessarily something you have to answer. That's something I'm asking as a broader question. Just because there are are issues and I I do like this project. I'm in favor of this project. I just, to me, this is a chance to bring up, you know, noise is an issue here. We're doing a great job of drilling down on noise here, but it's not the only place on the facility that makes noise. And so I just, I want to I I would like a broader discussion of noise to be included here, just because I think it's important to have that discussion.
Okay, Joe. No, Joe, I'm mixing it up.
So back to back to, so this, can these things be applicable site for the entire site? So for instance, is, are we measuring noise abatement from around the adjoining facilities during their operating hours? Are we measuring that at all?
So our main focus during this process was, again, mainly looking at the new improvements. So we didn't study, there wasn't any study of noise elsewhere on the site.
Right. I'm I'm supportive of this plan as well. I believe that JCC is a great partner. It's awesome to be here in the community. I also want to just say, if this was a truly zoned R one hundred property that was vacant, we definitely would be looking at the whole whole solistic. Let me ask you a hypothetical. Let's say we approve this and after it's built, noise, the the neighbors call up and say, you know what? It it's a problem. How do we, is there any means to address it once it's approved? Is there any recourse?
If it's not a violation of our noise ordinance, the code enforcement has, you know, limited recourse. So, you know, we would want to explore those options before it's approved, I would say.
Right. Again, my primary is is also about noise. Let me ask about the two courts. Kathy, you spoke pretty quickly at the beginning. One's covered, one's not. Which one's the covered and which one's not? I'm looking at the 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 diagram. I printed it off. I'm trying to draw it out on the line. Is it closer to the residential properties on the south side, kind of sort of?
Yeah. Can you see what I'm pointing to?
Uh, okay, yeah, yeah, thank you.
That the large area of the A courts, the building on top of it or the four. So the open area is the four that's to the north of the H structure. And then the small court is the one that is south.
And that's the covered one, the south one?
Yes.
Okay. And is that, is that just like a top or is it like enclosed, like three-sided or?
Actually closed down sides of it if there's inclement weather, for example. So I think they're controlled and just a roof.
So I I have to just say, without knowing anything about it, I would imagine that that should be quieter in and of itself. So it is closer to the residential. So I appreciate that, having that ability. Okay, let me see, let me see. The landscaping, well, well, you're putting now, did we know which option we're choosing A or B on the?
We've left that discretion of the staff.
Okay, that's still up in the air.
We trust them. And there's actually an exhibit C too, for yet additional work.
I've got exhibit C. So and the final package, is staff going to present which option we're going with? Or is that just going to be chose after the?
I think after.
The permit.
If you do option B, you'll be installing this acoustic sound barrier. Is that kind of like a, it's going to be ten foot high? I'm just, it's going to be along the forty-foot set but line. If you do that option, just want to make sure that it complements the landscaping, right? Whatever's there that it doesn't, you know, there's things grow into it. You want columnar things and it's not screening.
Part of the reason for the color choice, because there is a very heavy buffer there now. We have committed to infill it, however, with cedar trees planted ten feet on center as well as six-foot evergreens that will fill in among those so that there will be additional infill landscaping as part of the plan. Frankly, that may in and of itself reduce the noise, but we understand that there's a little more expected here. So that's why we made the commitments.
And just orient for the hours of operation, the Monday through Thursday, seven thirty AM to ten PM. Do you have outdoor activities going on today, those timeframes as well? Till ten?
Yes.
And and certain same noise level per se. I just want to make sure we're not introducing new because where I live, it's perfectly quiet. I hear the birds chirping on Sunday all day.
Yeah, those are the hours of operation of the center. So effectively, everything's going on.
All right. So we haven't had a history of their operating at that time and it's disrupting the neighbors. Okay, I think I have. Again, it's just the hours. It's about the light sound. And of course, the lighting, of course, I get the lighting now. So, great. Thank you.
Sure.
Catherine. Sorry. Kathy, you reference a traffic generation study. I'm not sure. I don't think I saw that in there.
That was in our statement of intent. You're probably familiar with the fact that there's this huge volume called the Institute for Transportation Engineers Trip Generation Manual. And they actually have case studies that they then put in a statistical format. And you can look at the number of courts or the size of the courts or your expected usage and translate that into traffic impact. And the ones you have to be most concerned about understandably are rush hour. So usually seven to nine and four to six. So my numbers that I was giving you were the ITA trip counts, I T E trip counts, excuse me, for morning and evening.
Okay. And how did that compare to what you have now? You said it's small.
It's fifty-seven cars.
Right. But what is your car?
Two hours.
Right. But what is your car count?
I have no idea.
Can you just? Okay, we'd love to see that.
I have no idea.
I mean, I don't know as a percentage what that means.
We may.
We don't mean tonight. No, we don't mean tonight. We just get it to our staff and our staff can get it to us. Thank you. Yeah, I was curious about that. And then one question for staff. I would assume that the applicant chose Acoustica. Or did you choose the acoustical survey?
So the different types of acoustic fencing were recommended by their sound consultant.
Yes, I'm asking about the consultant. It's named Acoustica. So.
That's what you're, she's asking who hired Acoustica, us or them?
Or chose them.
Sorry. Or chose them.
The app.
Yeah. So are you familiar with them?
They did provide a, not personally, they provided the a packet, you know, explaining Acoustica and and the.
Right. I got that. I just wondered if the city had ever worked with them before. We had any history. Okay, that's all. Thank you. Tom.
Thank you. Question will be for for staff or Madeline. My concerns are very similar to what Joe raises. Overall, I think this is a great addition to the community. But the but the sound issues, you know, so the condition, is it possible to word the condition differently? So it's not just that they will install, because if that, if what they're installing is not effective, we essentially, what I've heard, have no recourse to remedy that or mitigate that. Is it? I don't know if it's within our bounds to do this, or if there's an effective way to to set a decibel level at a certain distance or something where there's an actual measurable that that has to be reached. So and I don't, I'm not a sound engineer. I don't know what those numbers are, but something that is considered a reasonable sound level at the property line. And that's the condition, not just installing a mitigation, because if what's installed doesn't work, we have no recourse and the neighbors have no recourse either. So if there's a way to do that, that would make me feel a lot more comfortable. But otherwise, I'm pretty, pretty happy with what they proposed.
Um, thank you. So I think my first questions are for Kathy, maybe. It's really maybe for Jared. So the JCC is a tremendous asset to Dunwoody. Two of my three children went there for preschool. They all did camps there, activities, et cetera, forever. But you're not always the best neighbor. And pickleball, of which we're building courts, can be noisy. It can be noisy in part because of the equipment. But it can also be noisy because of the players. And one request I would have as a condition is, and I'm not sure how to word it, Madeline, I'm really sorry. We can figure this out maybe. Is is that there is research going on to improve the equipment. So the back, back, back gets better or minimalized? And what'd you say?
Scott.
Well, no, no, no. It's in a study. Right, it's in the study. And so I'd like to add a condition that when and if equipment that is noise reducing comes out, that the JCC will require. I certainly am going to recommend that for our parks, Eric, that we will switch to the equipment. In fact, by the time ours is built, I expect the, because there's like three billion people in the United States apparently who play pickleball, or so they tell us. And so and and so when that study, when that equipment is available, I'm going to ask that we require in our city pickleball courts, which we don't really have yet. We have four, but there are tennis courts as well. So that's one thing. The second thing is, is that we come up with a system to Tom's, everybody's point, that there is a way to manage concerns if your noise mitigation doesn't work. And so Madeline is going to work on that, I think. And then finally, though not directly related, so let me make a statement to anybody that's still here. A lot of people left and they were very dismissive of people's concerns. It can be true that two houses next to each other can have very different experiences with noise. I have it in my own neighborhood where there's one house that takes the brunt of an old data center that Coca-Cola put in to cavil out. Did you reason that?
No.
Okay, that's good because that was a big mistake. And so. Okay, that's good because that was a big mistake. And so, um, anyway, there's only one house. That hears the noise, but that house hears the noise. And so I want to ask you again to please work something out. Uh, in the next two weeks, a plan. I cannot have to contact you at the beginning of every summer about the noise at camp, carpool line. And the speakers. It's like, and I get it because camp, the staff probably turns over tremendously every year. But we need, you need a process and a policy in place to manage the noise. Um, and also the neighbors who also might be hearing and not bothered by it, that house could turn over tomorrow. And so I want you to come up with an effective system to manage neighbors' concerns. I want to hear about it when this comes back up. Um, I don't think that's an unreasonable expectation. You know, I spent a lot of time advocating for the gentleman in my neighborhood with the Coca-Cola cup. Well, whoever owned the data center after Coca-Cola, trying to understand if there was anything we could do. Um, I just, I don't think that's unreasonable. Um, and obviously you're not going to, I'm not asking you to be quiet all the time. I'm just asking you to try your hardest and your darnest to be a good neighbor. Um, all the time. I think some of the traffic concerns while we talk about rush hour. Um, you are a traffic generator, like when preschool gets out and when there's a big activity, they get to work with our, I mean, you will probably work with us already on managing that. I don't think pickleball courts are going to dramatically change the number of people using the J C C. Um, but it could and we may need a whole long-term like mutually cooperative plan for traffic, not just because of the pickleball courts, just because. And, and I support this idea of some metric. Whatever time, but my, my biggest ask is, is that as equipment. Improves, the J C C has, just like we're going to do, I'm not asking you to do something that I wouldn't require in my city parks, that you require your. Participants to change equipment.
The only thing that concerns me is I don't know how you control private use of the equipment. I mean, I don't, to the extent the J C C is furnishing the equipment. That makes sense, but if I'm going to play and I'm using my own.
You, that we require the certain kind of shoe, you require certain kinds of shoes on your baseball. You require, you require girls on the swim team to wear. What do you call them? Caps? I mean, if you go, I mean, I'm not, I mean, I might have a harder time than you, but y'all are a private club and you can set your own rules.
We'll talk about it.
Yeah, I mean, I don't, I just don't, I don't think that's a big ask. Pickleball is, can be really noisy and, and you said you played twice. But ten, how many pickleball courses is twelve? And they're going to be busy all the time. So twelve pickleball courts are going to be noisy and we should all have an invested, a vested interest. Even for your own J C C property to, to minimize noise as technology improves because there is a big push out there. It's in the study. Uh, as Council and Lon Biker said, and I just think that, you know, I, there are lots of clubs. They require you to wear a certain kind of tennis shoe on tennis courts. They don't let you throw the racket. I mean, there's private clubs, even cities can have rules. So I'm not worried about that. And, and I'm certainly not worried about the J C C enforcing it because their members will enforce it on each other. So I'm not worried about that. All right, anybody having other questions or comments? Uh, Madeline, you want to come back up for a second? I can't see you. Was that pretty clear? Okay, do you have any questions for us? You got it.
Well, I just want to confirm, um.
Ish.
So requirement, so look into a requirement for the quiet equipment and look into a system of managing the noise concerns.
Mm-hmm.
And then um, looking into trip generation.
Uh, we'd just like to see the traffic study that was done.
Yep. And then look into, uh, confirm that this is just the, not, it, it, that it exceeds the Berman Commons property.
Right, we don't want to mess up the Berman Commons. I think that's what you're a, you know, asking, right? We don't want to do anything that undermines those existing zoning under the Berman Commons or. It's really confusing because it really isn't existing piece of the J C C's property, right? I think, okay, you'll figure it out and let us know. And I don't know if you know this or Richard, is this two weeks or four weeks till this comes back?
It'll be four weeks.
Okay, thank you. All right. And you, thank you very much, Malin. I guess you're up here for the duration. Thank you very much to everybody from the J for coming. And Stacy can come back.
Mayor, item number six under the public hearings is a first read review and consideration of text amendments to the code of the city of Dunwoody. For chapter twenty-seven, article five, to reflect changes to this state zoning procedures law, Madeline Smith.
Good evening, everyone. So in the interest of, of everyone's sort of time and inefficiency, we have four text amendments. Um, and they're all relatively quick. So I'll go ahead and if it's all right with you, just give a presentation all at once.
Is that okay with everybody?
If it's okay with the, uh, public hearing rules, but I'm, I'm good, I'm good with that.
I think I still do the public hearing for each one separately, right?
Correct.
That's correct. So she's just going to give us.
Okay, so this evening we have four text amendments. Uh, the first is regarding just bringing our city codes up to date with the new zoning procedures law that were passed recently. And additionally, bringing our codes and standards up to um, the uh, requirements of the Metropolitan North Georgia Water Planning District. And then additionally, we have two other text amendments. One is amending the parking requirements for home occupations. And lastly, we are looking at amending our non-conforming regulations for non-conforming uses. So for the zoning procedures law update, the uh, Georgia State Legislature passed H B fourteen oh five and H B nine sixteen. And H B fourteen oh five amends mainly our public notice requirements for any sort of um. Uh, public hearings for city initiated rezoning. So for example, if the city of Dunwoody wanted to do. Uh, a citywide rezoning and maybe that included increasing density um, and allowing multifamily in previous single family zoning areas. The new law triggers a different public. You know, hearings process and public notice process for that. So essentially it heightens the standards. Uh, the ads need to be bigger. Um, there need to be more signs posted, you know, every five hundred feet. And so it just increases those standards. And then it also updates public notice requirements from fifteen days to thirty days. So that's going to affect not really our um, zoning board of appeals because those already have a thirty day. Um, uh, public notice requirements that we're meeting and following, but this is going to affect. Our special land use permit and rezoning timelines. So those are going to get lengthened out because we're now going from a fifteen day. Uh, public hearing notice to a thirty day public hearing notice. And then the other house bill was H B nine sixteen and that is updating the appeals process for zoning district or for zoning decisions. So. You know, after you all make a decision, it changes the legal process that they go through when they go to superior court. Uh, it's going from a, and I never pronounce this right, the writ of certiorari, I can't say it. Thank you so much. That, that's a tongue twister for me. So it's going from that to a petition for review. Um, so it doesn't necessarily affect our processes, but if it affects, you know, how applicants. Uh, or people wanting to appeal these decisions go forward after you guys make a decision. And so this is overall affecting uh, chapter seven, article five, and it's affecting divisions two, three, five, six, and eight. Our next text amendment is bringing our water efficiency requirements in accordance with the standards of the Metropolitan North Georgia Water Planning District. Another tongue twister, so bear with me. But essentially our, uh, water planning district provided us with model ordinances. And those are essentially being adopted as they were provided to us. Um, the main things that these water efficiency requirements do is they require new car washes to install recycled water systems. So this isn't going to affect existing car washes. Um, only new ones that come forward. And then second, it's updating our local plumbing code to um, specify water efficient plumbing fixtures that must be used. And so that's going to affect, you know, when people update their water systems, uh, update their plumbing fixtures, it needs to be in accordance with these standards. And this is affecting chapter eight, article four. The third text amendment is regarding parking for home occupations. So this was prompted by the experience of our code enforcement staff. Um, based on complaints that they had received, um, and essentially they discovered they didn't really have a way to enforce. Uh, or to, to mitigate those issues. And so this is a, a new enforcement tool and it's essentially prohibiting. You know, people from using their private homes as commercial parking. Um, and so. It is limiting the number of vehicles associated with the home occupation and this is to prevent people from storing excessive numbers of work trucks and then having people. Come there, park, grab the work truck, leave, bring it back. So that's really what this is intending to address. And so overall, it's clarifying to say that only one vehicle um, can be on this site in association with the home occupation. And it has to be used by one of the occupants of that dwelling. So the last requirement is related to our non-conforming use regulations. So essentially, this is. Removing our sort of exemptions for non-conforming uses. So our current code says after six months. Um, if you've abandoned a use, meaning you've discontinued your business license and the building is sitting vacant. If it sits vacant for six months, the use is considered abandoned and you can't reinstate it. Um, but our current code provides a list of very loose exceptions. Um, to allow people to reinstate abandoned uses. And i- in practice, it doesn't, they're very loose. And so they don't allow us to actually, you know, uh, retire these sort of. Currently, you know, legal non-conforming uses. It doesn't give us a, a way to get rid of those typically unattractive type uses. Um, and it becomes a real barrier to, you know, implementing things like our Dunwoody Village Master Plan. Um, that's where we've seen sort of our, our main issues coming up with these uh, very loose requirements. So. We're removing all of those exemptions. Um, and. You know, that is in accordance with most of the other surrounding jurisdictions. They don't have these sort of loose exemptions that we do. Um, and it allows them to actually retire those um, unappealing uses. And so. Essentially, the time period that we have specified in our code for abandoning uses stays the same. Again, it's just removing those exemptions. So overall, again, those are our four text amendments this evening. Um, and if you guys have any questions, I'd be here to answer them.
Do the public hearing process.
Perfect, thank you.
All right, so we're going to, Sharon, have you already read number six? Okay, so we're going to start with number six. I'm going to open the public hearing unless there's an objection from council seeing no objection. Um, I'm going to ask if anyone is in favor of this to line up in the center. If anyone is opposed, to please line up in the center. All right, questions? I, I have a question. I'm so sorry. Madeline. Yeah, we're one by one. So we're on number six. We're on the one that the state has changed. Do, one of the things that changed in the state, and I did read it, but then I read them all and I forgot to go back and look and I can't do it right now. Is that one of the things that changed with the state is when the city is changing its zoning code, you to put up lots and lots of signs. Is that reflected in the changes you've made?
Correct. So we've essentially taken those um, requirements written in H B fourteen oh five and translated them into our code.
All right, so I have a question. It might be for you or Richard or Ken. So I think we need to clarify our. Requirements as it relates to documents related to things that come through our SLUP or rezoning process. And what I mean is, is I don't want the planning commission. Or us to be voting on something the same day new information is received. Does that make sense? And we've talked about this before and I thought we had fixed it so that like the noise report from the planning commission that got to the planning commission the day of. And I know we've advised, y'all have advised them that they can defer. But I just, I think we need to straight, we need to clarify that. I don't know if we want to try to do it by the second read of this. Or if you want to, is it even the right section of the code?
I, I would do that as a separate text amendment because that was.
Okay.
Very involved.
Okay, yeah, if we could clarify some of that just for future councils and planning commissions. Okay. Um, yeah, so this is, the survey on council knows these changes because Decatur did it and it's at the expense of the signs. It's not insignificant, just alone. Yeah, go ahead.
Yes, we'll probably come back at some point and ask you all to increase our sign allowance if, if it comes up.
Right, because it's only in specific cases. It's not like, it would not, like the J C C's requests would not trigger these new requirements.
No, it's only when.
Right, city initiated, right.
It's only city initiated and it's only when you are um, allowing multifamily and previously single family.
Yes, exactly. Okay, um. My understanding, Ken, is that this can go on consent because, right, because it's a second read.
Well, my, I'd be close to public hearing. I didn't hear that.
Shoot, oh, I did, I did. So then we were having discussion and I was the only one with question. Any more questions? Oh, go ahead, Joe.
So just for frame of mind context, if this uh, zoning procedures law was in place uh, three or four years ago, when we changed the village. With added, what, what we did to the village, uh, would we have also had, would that trigger, um? That wasn't single family.
Not single family to begin with.
No, I mean, but it was a change, but it wouldn't have triggered. All right. And okay.
Decatur was allowing duplexes and triplexes and quadruplexes. That's what triggered it for them. Go ahead.
Uh, Madeline, tell me, how does this work in the sense of the public notice and the advertising in the newspaper? How are the timelines? How tight are the deadlines now? And are we able to meet the new deadlines? Have we done the math in the sense of how often, how soon we have to get the notices in, but yet it's got the hearings have to be done by a certain day? Is it workable under current? Uh, perspective of our legal organ publishing things that work? Have we thought that through?
So it extends the, the timeline out for these city initiated rezonings that are of this nature.
Okay.
Um, uh, it should not be an issue to accommodate the ads in the crier, the way they're supposed to run. Um, so we don't foresee an issue in that regard.
Uh, councilman, like, we'll also have as part of this, um, because there's significant sort of ambiguity around this. Um, we'll push everything back to like the thirty day advertisement period, like any application, uh, which will extend the timeline. Down the road, when the process of updating our timelines, but everything would have to be so far, we've updated like zoning cases. We've advertised fifteen days at a time. Now it'll be thirty days at a time.
Okay.
So it'll push back everything, the planning commission and it'll push back everything to man city council also.
Again, it's one thing for us to vote and approve something. I want to make sure the staff is ready and knows the timelines with the legal requirements, the publishing, the legal organ, the number of hearings. Does the math all work? Does it, does it all work? And it sounds, everybody's nodding. So it sounds like yes, that's been thought through and well done. So thank you. How many of these do you, I can't remember a city initiated, single family rezoning item that we've done yet. Can, how many have we done like this? How many would be subject to this? Can we think of any?
I don't think any because we haven't changed any single family to multifamily. Um, the city of Decatur did it and then the city of Atlanta has done it.
Okay. All right, thank you. That's all I had. Appreciate it. It, it, ma- madam mayor, I, I got confused between the SLUP and the text amendment because the SLUP has other additional requirements that y'all come back. You can't put that on consent, but the text amendments you could without objection, especially with no public comment unless there's something you're going to add or subtract.
Okay, is everybody okay with consent on this one? Okay, all right. So now, Madeline's already presented, so I'm going to open the public hearing on number seven unless I see an objection. This is the um, water efficiency uh, regulations that it's told to us by the North Georgia. Water people. And so, um, if there's anyone who would like to speak for these changes, please line up in the center. If there's anyone who would like to oppose this. Yeah, if anybody would like to oppose these changes, uh, I know Brett is not standing up to come to oppose them. Um, please join us in the center. All right, seeing none, I close this, unless there's an objection, I close this public hearing. Does anyone have questions about this? Okay, go ahead, uh, for Madeline. Okay, go ahead, for Madeline, I guess, because that's.
And you may not know the answer. I'm guessing this came about because of the revision of their plans. And they came up with new requirements. How often do they, what's their cycle for doing this? Is it as needed or every five years or I'm just curious?
I don't know.
How often you might expect tweaks to ordinances to roll through the metro area?
I do know, if you want to know, I called today. They lasted this in twenty ten.
Okay, all right, so in frequently.
In twenty ten.
It's probably a, it's probably a leadership, like who's on the board and who's whatever. Okay, anybody questions on this one? Oh, John, oh, sorry, John.
Basically, it puts a whole lot of new requirements into water efficiency. But, and I understand. We want to put this in to be concurrent with the law. Who enforces this? Does our code enforcement look at this whatsoever? Are we gonna look at, are we gonna test the faucets and the, when we go through a home inspection to figure out? I mean, we're looking at the pipes in the wall, we're not checking the flow rate on the showerhead, or are we?
So our, our main enforcement is when, you know, people are coming forward for new home permits or plumbing permits. Um, that's something that are, it's in chapter eight, so it's under the purview of our building official and thus our, our building inspectors.
All right, so it's on, it has to be in the plan that these are in concurrence that these work, I'm seeing the. Good, Richard, why don't you tell us? Okay, it sounds like we're, the plan review will tell us what's going on. And if a home inspector goes through, they may be looking for this or they may not. All right. Thank you, that's all, I'm just trying to figure out how, I mean, there's one thing to put laws on the books. The other is how or when is this enforced? Thank you.
Catherine.
My question, Madeline, is if, so I, I, my understanding of this, is ARC is requiring this fifteen metro county. Update. For water efficiency. But this is a, this is a floor, we can actually do more water construction. Have you considered, or do you consider before these kind of amendments, talking to the sustainability committee?
So we adopted these model ordinances as they were presented. They didn't undergo review by the sustainability committee.
I am just suggesting that as a future possibility. Thank you.
Joe.
I don't think we have a pull-through car wash in all of Dunwoody, is that correct statement? A pull-through one?
No, the one at the. At the village, yeah.
That is a pull one, yeah.
And the one at Shambly Dunwoody in the interstate. I don't know that they use it that way, but it was a.
Okay, all right, cool. I also, as can John, like the checks and balances, that's with the permit. I bought my house in two thousand eight before the city was incorporated. And I had all my toilets replaced because they were non-conforming. And at DeKalb County at the time, I'd have a certified. Statement by a certified plumber showing he installed the, the low-flow toilets. Now, I did a, our, do, do we, I didn't see anything about toilets on this, on this, on the change, but. Do we do that as well along the, the list? I see the faucets in here, if you do a search for that.
No, we just, uh, were they gonna change the toilet out? We require that, that's only.
Right, when it's a change.
Correct.
But it is in our code somewhere.
Water closet, one point two gallons.
Oh, it's called water closet, I was looking for the term toilet, so pardon my, my ignorance and my illiteracy there. Okay, um, I also would follow up with Catherine, I'd like to lead by example as well. That we can do better as our own city government for what we have on city-owned property. Right, so I'd like to enter, I'd like entertain us offering up for what we have internally. I know years ago, the three of us on the sustainability committee and so on, we had some internal policies. I'd like to see what we're doing when we're building out these new properties in the next coming few years that we incorporate. Really best practices that we, we go for, right? I know on Vermac Park, we talked about putting a couple of solar things on there, sure, but you know, what else? The, the water retention. So I know there's the public facing, but obviously I'd like us to talk the talk and walk the walk on our own as well.
Yeah, there actually is.
We have different requirements.
That language in their code. Spruell recently. When they did the renovations, the sustainability committee got a hold of that. They drafted that letter to all demanding that they do that. They. Did the work and. Presented evidence of why they could not do it, it was a cost.
So, well, that's, that's new, but yeah, for us, let's try to strive, thank you.
And we can work on that. Um, but this is, okay, so can this be on consent? Yes, okay. All right. Next, I'm gonna open the public hearing on number, oh, Sharon has to read it, sorry. Read it.
Number eight is a first-rate review and consideration of text amendments to the code of the city of Dunwoody for chapter twenty seven, article three, division three. To update commercial vehicle parking regulations for home occupations.
All right, I'm gonna open the public hearing, anyone here to speak in favor? Of these changes, these proposed changes? Seeing none, anyone here to speak against, just join us in the center, please, of these changes? Seeing none, unless there's an objection, I close this public hearing. Public hearing is closed. Um, all right, questions for staff, John Henigan?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I object to number eleven in the sense of the class one vehicles as defined by the Federal Highway Administration are exempt. I did the research, when I looked at the definition, I couldn't find a really good one. At first I thought it was motorcycles, I looked back at staff. And they gave me a link to which I guess is showing up on this website here. And. It's not from the Federal Highway Administration website, it's from some other website. I need some clearer definition of what you're trying to exempt. It's just wasn't cutting it for me, I looked at several different ways, staff is nodding their head, again, it's not very clear. I don't understand what you're trying to do. From the what's in front of us on the text amendment, it's class one is under six thousand pounds. Again, not coming from the Federal Highway Administration website. A pickup truck, my pickup truck. Would not be exempt. So it's a, it's an F one fifty pickup truck and it's not accepted. And it's hard to determine what is a class one, what is, what is exempt, what is not exempt? A commercial motor vehicle is typically under ten thousand gross vehicle weight rating. That's the typical thing that you would need. As far as I'm concerned, to be a commercial vehicle, that's usually the cutoff. For registration with the Federal Motor Carrier Safety Administration, that all the trucking rules start at ten thousand gross vehicle weight rating. I'm just looking, asking staff to look back at the definition of what they're trying to exempt to make sure that it's. Enforceable, that when you drive by the truck, you know what you're really looking at. Have some aspect of what you're trying to exempt out, because to me, doing the research. I found that I couldn't understand it. And after showing staff, that they could see where I was also very confused based on what their definition or what they're trying to do. So just tighten up that definition, make it so that if you're trying to make something enforceable. Make it enforceable, because right now I don't think it is. Thank you.
Go ahead, Tom.
Oh, yeah, and I'll, I'll second that comment. When I looked up the federal high, again, I thought I was doing something wrong, that's because. Federal Highway Administration classifies it as a motorcycle, I'm like, well, that can't be the only thing. And so as I continued to look, I found multiple definitions. Some went by axle, some went by the number of tires. And I, I had no idea what a class one vehicle was by the time it was done, so I, I'll second what John said there for concern. I have a question, so this is in the home occupation business, so this only, so if I am a, a general contractor and I own the business and. I run the business out of my home, this would apply to me, but if I. Am a general contractor and I have an office elsewhere. Could I park my commercial vehicles on my property? Does this no longer apply to me in that case?
So you, if you have a, a business that's not based out of your home, you are allowed to, to have your work truck there. Our concern is. Specifically, we're responding to a specific situation where there was a home occupation where they were essentially using. That property for storage of, you know, commercial vehicles and work trucks.
But shouldn't, shouldn't the same standard be applied to all homes regardless? Because I, I understand there's one specific, there may be one specific situation, but if. The fact that I don't operate my business. Out of my home, I operated out of somewhere, shouldn't allow me to. Get away with storing as many vehicles as I want on my property. And, and I guess the same issue would be is, I don't, if I don't own the business, maybe I just work for a landscaping company and I have a bunch of box trucks that I. Go straight out into work in the morning and I'm parking them on my. Property that I either own or rent or whatever, that wouldn't, I, by my read of this, that wouldn't apply to me as well, but. So it's the same problem, but it, it only is targeting one specific. Problem and doesn't solve the whole issue, in my opinion. So I would like it to be more. Comprehensive and. Cover all situations, not just home occupation business.
I. So I think we have. So I think this came from the concern that commercial vehicles are stacking up in driveways. And, because this is not prompted by a change from the state or anything, right? No, and I think the concern, as I understood it, or as I've heard since, I. Is, is that commercial vehicles are stacking up in driveways and often spilling onto the street. That's a concern and they sometimes present safety hazards because people can't see. We have other issue, we have this gravel parking lot issue. I mean, uh, but we have, we have these challenges that are all sort of centered around parking. And while I think this is well-intentioned, if these issues can't be addressed, maybe we need to step back and just look at parking. Which is something we've been hesitant to do through the years. But maybe it's, and maybe there's best practices related to this, I don't know. I actually don't know the solution, I just know the challenge is that people are talking about trucks and weights and stuff, go ahead.
And, uh, Mayor and, and Councilman Lambert. What this is allowing us to do, if we have something like this in the books, is when a business license comes through for review. Like every business license gets a zoning review. And what this allows us to do is ahead of time, sort of when they come in for a business license application. To put a condition in there that says if it's something related to like a contracting business. To put a condition in there that says no more than, than one vehicle can be parked on the site. That, that's the purpose of this specific text amendment, the others may be needed as well.
So then John's truck isn't an issue because he's not coming in for a business license. Correct?
Uh, correct, yeah.
So, so. Then that makes sense. And then we should still talk about parking, because I wonder how many. Of the areas where issues we're having are people that bother to get a business license. And so. This may or may not solve. Go ahead.
So I hadn't connected those dots, so if they're coming in for a business license, then this applies. So then if you have a code enforcement question and you go out and there's five trucks parked in and they don't have a business license, then you can investigate further. Am I? Okay.
Sort of, right, if we can't prove, I know, okay, so. I still think we should maybe talk about parking at some point, if we can figure out a way to do it that doesn't feel too HOA. Because I think that's been the fear of past councils and, and I understand those concerns. I don't think it's unreasonable to think that people's. Should, you know, I think this was generated by concerns at one specific property where. But there are others, because I've seen them, where cars are, they're so taxed stacked in that they end up sticking out in the. You know, they're at the edge of the driveway or beyond, go ahead, John.
How does this affect multifamily properties? I'm a painter. I live in an apartment complex. I got two trucks. I, how does it affect multifamily? The working-class people that own their own business. Work out of, you know, I'm just, they don't work out of their apartment, they drive their painting truck or whatever. And I know the city of Doraville has done some extensive work when it comes to parking, street parking.
Street parking.
There's, they've done a whole bunch of other stuff on that, I just want to make sure you're aware of that. And I'm not sure if it's good or bad, I just know they did something. But really, my question comes to multifamily. I want to make sure that we're not. Hindering. The people that are trying to, I'm trying to understand with the, if there's, if that's an issue, part of the problem, not the problem. And what, whether this would affect anything of that situation.
The, sort of from our regulatory standpoint and in, in practice, the complexes tend to be more strict than, than we are. So often the complexes will. If, if there's sort of work vehicles parked on site, they may approach that. Uh, from our standpoint, the home occupation regulations apply the same way to single family as to multifamily. So you can have a, and we do have plenty of those registered in multifamily buildings and, and the same regulations would apply.
Thank you, Joe.
So do we know approximately how many properties would be affected by this if we were to make this change today?
Um, so we get into this and this is sort of what, what the mayor said. That we're bringing these things up to you all when we perceive problems and they often get. Get, become knowledgeable to us through complaints. So we have, I think it's two properties that we're sort of actively monitoring regarding this. But the, the matter at hand is something that would be good for our enforcement team to have sort of have in the back pocket, in a, in a sense.
Okay, and then the second question is have other cities regionally, aside from Dorville doing other things? Have they had any other similar, is there another regional city that has something similar in place today as an ordinance for what you're proposing?
Yeah, we, we, we did a, we did a review kind of of our typical peer communities and there are places, I don't have it in front of me right now, but it's. It's something like this exists in, in other places too, and we can bring that. At the second reading.
And I do think some cities might regulate parking, like in their driveways, right? Or, I mean, some cities do that, I'm not saying who, because I don't know, but I do think some cities, so. Sometimes it's not necessary to have these kind of rules because you're regulating. All the, all the parking, anybody else? So now that we better understand it, can we put it on consent or you want it? No, you want to.
Want to read it?
Okay, that's fine.
I wonder, understand the issue more, to be honest.
That's fine, that's fine. All right, not, that's fine. All right, whenever Sharon's ready.
The last public.
Yeah, that's Sharon's reading it.
The last public hearing item number nine is first read review and consideration of text amendments to the code of the city of Dunwoody. For chapter twenty seven, article six, division four, to update the requirements for non-conforming issues, I mean, uses, sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry, need to open the public hearing. Is there any objection to opening the public hearing? Seeing none, anyone who would like to speak in favor of these changes, please join us. Seeing no one, is anyone would like to speak opposed against these changes, please join us. All right, unless there's an objection, I close the public hearing and we can ask questions of, oh, of Madeline. Want to, go ahead, Stacy.
So, kind of what Joe asked, like to put it in real life, the old Burger King building in the, in the village. So it is now non-conforming because it has a drive-through, so if nothing has gone in there in six months, it loses its ability to have. It's losing its permissions to have a drive-through, is that correct?
So from, so for example, from the, if this gets approved. From the date of that approval, they would have six months to either reinstate that use or after the six months, it's considered abandoned. And it wouldn't be allowed to operate a drive-through on that property anymore. But any other allowed use would be.
Thought we had that already with the drive-throughs.
But this. If you marketed or lease. That's an exception that we want to get rid of.
Oh. Okay. Ooh. Okay, anybody, John?
I had the same question for staff and email and I thought the, the fact that it's grandfathered today, the grandfathering would continue. Until it overturns or it's in compliance right now with the zoning that's in place now and all these same requirements are in place. And it's grandf, I thought it would be grandfathered in, that's why I'm trying to understand staff's answer to me previously.
So now we're trying to get rid of the grandfathering. I think, I've told Bruce Williams who owns the Burger King that he has lost his right to open that restaurant with a drive-through.
Okay.
So. And that was when we passed the master plan.
And that goes into effect six months after we pass, if we were to pass this ordinance? I mean, he would have, in other words, when does the grandfathering stop?
So on the Burger King, I, I think it has stopped already because. It was made very clear to you all.
Right.
Bruce Williams that that was, and he has not. He hasn't argued that at all.
Okay, I'm just, I'm trying to understand the ins and outs of what we're doing today versus how it affects. Not only one piece of property, but any grandfathered property. And when does the grandfathering stop? And when does, what notice do they have? I'm trying to understand. Intended consequences of somebody a year from now saying, well, I had these rights, you never told me, how did I not know? So I'm just, I'm worried about unintended consequences, I want to make sure that's all thought out and it sounds like.
Yes, on the Chipotle, they signed a contract within six months down to almost the day. Of the previous owner abandoning it, so that's why they're allowed to keep the drive-through. If you all pass this, six months is all that's grandfathered and then it changes. If you all pass this, six months is all that's grandfathered and then it changes.
Mayor, I think I can help.
Please.
Councilman Henigan and, and staff.
And all of us.
So, uh, here. Let me separate out what has just been said. We prefer as advisors to y'all, and I don't want to get in specific situations, but we don't, grandfathering has to be granted by y'all. We prefer you don't grandfather anybody. That didn't mean they lose rights. They don't have other options in the court because there's grandfathering is a vested right that you're conveying to somebody by saying, we're going to recognize you anyway. That does not mean that person, just because you don't have grandfather and doesn't have other rights. There's something in the law called vested rights. Vested rights is when I do rely on government activity, I spend money in furtherance of an activity, I may be able to go to court without grandfathering and argue vested rights. The third option and what staff is simply saying is it doesn't mean there won't be a drive-through on a particular property the rest of history. It means they got to come back to y'all and do something. And then you can apply your updated codes, your updated rules, your updated whatever to whatever they're trying to do. So I want to make sure that the grandfathering, I, I would not, I don't know this, but most governments that I've represented don't have grandfathering, period. You don't want grandfathering. You want them to come back so you can get conformity with whatever is the latest and greatest. But at the same time, they do have the in-between and the in-between is vested rights. They've done something in reliance on government that is in the books. They have a right to be protected to the extent they send, uh, they spend money and reliance upon that activity, that permit, that whatever. And lastly, I want, I want to say this, I think what staff wants is people to come back and make a new request, conditions on the ground. And the government may change. I think that's what the purpose of that this last one is, I, I believe. And so to your concern, I think that people, property owners would still have rights. It's not a formal, we got to give you notice, we're taking some. You don't have it to begin with, or if you do, you get it through vested rights or through a new permit, which is what we prefer so that you comply with updated requirements, whatever. I hope that sort of addresses that issue.
It does, except for the vested rights. And let me just ask the question, if I had a special land use permit that allowed a condition, drive-through, whatever it is, that would then be tied to the land and it would not be expiring. Is that correct? Is that, is that how it works? The slop for a drive-through, let's say it was through DeKalb County or through us, that would run with the land, right? So that wouldn't be.
No.
I'm trying to understand.
No. A, a slop is a special land use unless the slop actually grants the running with the land to a future applicant. It doesn't automatically run. It depends on how it's approved when it comes before you. A special use permit is giving Tom the special use to do what he's presented to council. And it can be for a set period of time. It could be indefinite. It could be during his ownership. It could be, it could run with the land. So I, I don't, I wouldn't say that it applies all the time. It sort of depends on what's being approved by council at the time. Is that correct, Richard?
Okay.
So their recommendation, you got to pay very close attention to it about the running part.
Okay. I just want to make sure that that's, that's clear. To me, I always thought the slop for the most part was running with the land. So maybe then from the future, we got to remember not to always run it with the land. Thank you.
Joe.
What is the time period now? So let's say abandonment, what we're seeing. So if, if some, some ongoing concern has something and then what is that time period when they stop?
It's six months. So and it's six months now. It'll be six months in the, in the future like that. We're not changing that. Like, so it's six months. Um, what we're changing is that there was a opportunity to sort of for rebuttal to that six month time period that under certain conditions, you could like pretty much like if you actively leased it or if you maintained the property conditions that were fairly easy to meet, we're just taking that out, but we're not changing the actual timeline. We're not changing the actual process.
I'll just give you another example, not going into specifics, but, um, for example, a property that had a, a, a drive-through several years ago and it wasn't in operation for a long time. And then a new operator came in and set up a temporary drive-through for one day per se.
What?
They kept it that, does that kept it in use?
But you didn't, I don't think that's right. I think they were under six months. You've added time. I think they, I, I know what he's talking about. I think it was under six months.
The, the, the letter of the law or the spirit, if, if a, a future, if this is in place. Um, are they, are they, if they do that within the six month period, are, is that still going to keep their ongoing? Did they, did they perform as permitted as, as non-compliant?
It's sort of not fully sure I understand the hypothetical, but you would have to go through, I mean, you would have to obtain a business license to operate. You would have to obtain a certificate of occupancy. So it's, it's an involved process sort of that goes, but.
I think they did all that. So the idea is, is that you have six months to preserve your drive-through, which I think this probably applies to more than drive-throughs, but maybe not.
I, I would like to make sure then that they have in this checklist that they have a certificate of occupancy and a valid business license for, for whatever is needed. And if it's a food and beverage, then they have to have all what would need. Okay. So just kind of.
But they, in this case, they did because they opened. But Tom?
Yeah. And just for clarity, uh, clarity, I, I believe it does apply to a lot more than that. Just so, for example, in the village and correct me if I'm wrong, as I'm understanding, we've changed the underlying zoning in the village. One of those would be, I don't remember the exact specifications, but two banks couldn't be within a quarter mile of each other. So if there were two banks next door to each other, one sat closed for six months. If they did not reopen that as a bank, they would lose, they would no longer be able to have a bank in that.
That's correct.
Okay.
Thank you. Anybody questions? Way too much discussion on this. We'll bring it back as a business item, please. All right, we've gotten to the consent agenda. Eight thirty-seven. Um, all right, um, consent agenda. Does anyone have questions on any items?
Move to approve.
Second.
Second. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Seeing none? Um, I call the question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none? That passes. Thank you. I think my phone may have died. I'm just kidding. All right. We're going to have to use technology.
Yes, thank you, Mayor.
I can do it. Hold on. Wait a minute. I have to get to the item.
The next item under the agenda is under business items, park naming campaign for the Vermac Road and Roberts Drive Park Properties, Brent Walker.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Siding times in the parks world in Dunwoody. I'm happy.
Exciting.
Open one on a Saturday and name two more on a Monday. So it's a good day in the parks industry when we get to do that. So um, hopefully you all got my email earlier this afternoon. We're going to try something a little different. So bear with me. Um, with the number of names that we have for the Vermac property and Robert's Drive property, I created two, uh, ranking polls and Mentimeter. I'm going to pull that up on the screen in a second and you'll be able to enter the code in where you will then rank the names for each property. Excuse me. Uh, at one, at that point, once we have our top two names uh, for that property, I'll ask the mayor to, um, take a vote between those two top names. And that's what I think is the easiest way to make a selection instead of trying to drill through all the names. Um, now we did have another name come in over the weekend. A Homecoming Park was, uh, issued for the Vermac property. Um, so I would ask that council make a decision if you want to add that name to the list uh, as part of this meeting before we get into the conversation.
I would like to have the name for this.
And I don't know if that.
It's fine. Wait, do we need to? No, I don't think, do I have to amend anything for her? I don't think so. But are you going to, like, is in the email that I can't find?
It's, it's just an email asking you to make sure to bring your.
Oh, okay.
So that you could take.
Okay. All right, I have my phone. Okay. All right. So I, there was a second name. Wait. Okay. Never mind. Okay, hold on.
All right, hold on a second. Let me pull it up for you. All right, we'll do Vermac first.
So you're going to.
It'll have a, it'll have a thing here.
It'll have a QR code.
Yeah, let me. Pull this up.
No, I know. I don't think that's going to help. It's about the phone.
Yeah, I just emailed you asking you to make sure you had your phone with you so that you could take the quiz. All right, let me pull that up. Can you guys see the screen now?
Yes.
All right.
Hope it works on my phone.
All right, there we go. This is version two because this has the additional name on it. So if you go to mentee.com, or you can try scanning the QR code and then punch in the code on the screen. Let me know. Just raise your hand when everyone has got that and has the code entered. Hopefully you are seeing the Vermac Road. Again, this is an experiment. Trying out for the first time. I do have four. Yeah, try that just. Because I'm seeing lots of hearts pop up on the screen. So maybe you guys are just loving it. Let me try. So try this. If y'all have the ability. So I just typed in mentee.com and this is the screen I got where you enter the code. Yeah, the, once you get to this screen, you just enter the code one, one, nine, nine, four, eight, three, one.
And then it says instructions. Is that what it's supposed to say? Oh, so you probably have to do some. Okay, we're in.
Okay, let's try this. Let me, let me go to the next screen. All right, there we go. There we go. So you should have on your phone now a, a dropdown for number one. So select that option that you would like for number one. And as you go through one through eight, the names will start disappearing off as you rank them. And once you've ranked all eight, just raise your hand and let me know that you're done.
Fail if we this is Vermac.
Yes, rank them top, your top number one through number eight. Your, your favorite being number one and your least favorite being number eight.
And there's no way, like, if you just can't stand a name to leave it off, you still have to rank it?
Make that number eight.
Okay.
Number eight, the last, last one is everybody's least favorite.
Right.
All right. Oh, it's changing. It's changing as you go.
No, I haven't submitted yet. I'm struggling here.
Please don't blame Brent. This was my idea.
Yeah, when you're done, please raise your hand. So I know you're.
Of course. I'm not done. I'm coming. Well, me. Submit. Six and now it's just you. Have you voted? Who hasn't submitted?
It may be mine showing up.
Right, okay.
So there's, that was me. Everybody, that was me going on it on my phone. I just turned, I just shut mine off. So don't worry about number eight. That was me on my phone. Okay, so.
Right.
Yeah.
Right.
So everybody's voting. Number eight was me.
That would have been fun to let the public vote, actually. Sorry.
So clearly, uh, you know, our number one and number two are Humblebee Park and Homecoming Park.
Okay.
So that is what we'll be voting on. One of those names will be the, um, future park name. So with that, I will turn it over to the mayor and.
Oh, are we not doing like a little thing? We don't have to do that for there's two. Okay, so the top two are Humblebee and Homecoming. And to be totally honest, I'm okay with either of these. And so um, I'm gonna let y'all vote. And if there's a tie, I'll decide, I guess. Um, okay, who wants Humblebee Park? I'm sorry. Oh, let's have some discussion.
Have some discussion.
Right. We should have, and we don't, maybe we have to have a motion, but anyway. Discussion, go ahead.
I just want to know if somebody has a strong opinion between the two.
I kind of really like Homecoming because it's just to me, like, like it's a park that is inviting to everyone. It kind of has, like, when people ask us, well, where's Two Bridges Park? And we're like, well, it's over there. We can say it's Homecoming. It's where the Dumbarton High School Homecoming Parade goes by. So like, it kind of helps with the direction of placemaking as well. Humblebee, I feel like we're going to have to explain the meaning behind it. I think the meaning behind is very valid. I think this is a keep it simple, stupid kind of moment. And it's simple. It's Homecoming. It's warming. It's welcoming. It's where the Homecoming Parade goes. So that is why I'm voting for Homecoming.
Okay, John?
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that both of these names were actually last minute additions.
Yeah.
Right. So and nobody outside the seven of us really know where any of these names, these two names came from. But yet we're about to vote on it. So I just want to make sure we.
We can, we can punt this for two weeks just so that it's agenda cool.
I mean, nobody knows about these two names except for us. And I'm trying to understand.
One, that is true of all the names.
Right, that's true.
They were not.
Right.
They were not described
that is true.
For the submissions. They were just submitted some without description and then added or deleted from the list.
Well, both of these were my one and two. And I will advocate again, the Humblebee Park came from a resident with a special needs child and said that this was a welcoming type park. There's a whole email with photos and aspects, but also Homecoming Park, I really like as well. I like it for a lot of reasons, including what Stacy said. But I also like it for, in the sense of we saw a bunch of photos this week from prom where kids got together in a park and then they actually went to the Roberts Park, whatever the name, whatever that name will be next. And, but there was no background. It was just an open grass field. If we were to do Homecoming Park, I'd love to make it a beautiful place for photos. You know, if it's springtime, azaleas, lots of flowering bushes on the perimeter. I mean, make it a home. I like Homecoming. I like Humblebee. I just want to make sure we think about both of them and why we're doing it. That's all.
You know, the nice thing about Homecoming is, is that it is an old homestead. It was, and we're going to maybe keep, we're keeping the little white house. It is an old homestead. Maybe one of the first homesteads in Dunwoody. But again, I'm not really invested in either. It doesn't really matter. And I want to be clear in case anyone is actually paying attention that two weeks ago I advocated for Vermac. Right, I add, add, and, and was pointed out that we would confuse the swim tennis situation across the street. Yeah, I'm pointing out, voting out. Okay, Tom, go ahead.
Uh, yeah, just a, a couple of comments. Um, I li, I like the, the spirit behind the Humblebee. But again, if people don't, if it's, it's not intuitive. People aren't going to know that. I'll also just say, for what it's worth, I Googled Humblebee. There's a cosmetics company. There's another company. There's, so it's, a lot of corporations use that name and that could be confusing to the public as well that somebody sponsors it or doesn't. I, I love everything that Stacy said about Homecoming. I love the, the spirit behind that. Maybe even have a Homecoming events there uh, for the, for the school. Um, so yeah, I just, I think that's, that's a good choice.
Go ahead, Joe.
So yeah, I want the, the citizens, Tina Walden. So I want to thank her for that suggestion for the Humblebee Park. She did put a great, uh, story together. Um, so whether it's Homecoming or Humblebee, um, I would also like to say whatever becomes of that back park, it could be the Humblebee Corner or something that we can name something themed tied into what the purpose is for the, um, for the playground, the playfield and that area. So.
There's a pollinator garden in that plant too.
Yeah, so it could be there.
Lots of opportunities.
Right. All right, I think we can just vote. We can vote. Anybody, uh, I think I need a motion.
I move that we named the park currently known as Vermac Park and we rename it to Homecoming Park.
Move by Stacy.
A second.
Second by Tom. Any further discussion?
Um, I'm just going to point out that right now everybody thinks the name of it is Future Park. So this is.
Future Park one, Future Park two. Uh, okay. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I call the question. All in favor, say aye. All right, any opposed?
I just have to give props to my friend Joanna Mangum for coming up with, uh, the name. That was her idea. So.
You could have argued for something else.
I am very satisfied with the process.
Right, okay, right, which is, we do. Right, okay, right, which is, we do the process because of you. So that's good. All right, next, Roberts.
Do we need to read the resolution in to record with the name or is that?
I don't think so. I don't think so. We're the only people that.
All right, let's.
We have to wait.
This one should be easier. Okay. And there is the code for the second one.
That's fine. So WW. Not for minty.com.
Let me know when you get the instruction screen again and I'll forward it to the next line.
Is everybody on with the instructions? Oh, seven. No, it's only, oh, okay.
Again, lots of hearts, lots of hearts.
You can go.
All right, there we did. There it is. All right. Here we go.
Oh. Wow, that's a lot of voices.
Eleven on this one. So, and we did add Old Buck Park and Roberts Park to this list since the last discussion.
I will point out, as we did. Talk about last time, Roberts is a person. If we're against the person and Cherokee is under the Native American purview that we were trying to. Move away from. Light Horse Park really falls in that as well.
And the, in your memo, it does get the history from Valerie Bickerstaff about Old Buck and, um. The conductor's last name was Roberts. So that's where that name comes from. There we go, one in. Yeah. It's faster than talking about each one individually. So. Oh, that's true. Next time. That's it. Oh, jumped. All right, that's all seven. So.
As a reminder, Two Bridges was a four-three vote as well. So just so y'all know.
So.
So who wants to argue? For any of these or against? Go ahead, Tom.
Well, I'll argue for Old Buck. I sent the council, uh, the history of that. That was the train. They used to run from Chambley right through Dunwoody up to Roswell. It literally ran right by the park site. Uh, Roberts Drive is named after the family of the conductor of that train. Um, so, uh, Dunwoody residents. Back in the eighteen hundreds, use that train regularly to get into Atlanta to sell their goods. Teddy Roosevelt rode it right through Dunwoody in nineteen oh five. It has a lot of, I think that name has a lot of. Ties not only to the history of Dunwoody, but also specifically to that. Area, the train literally ran right past the park. So. I, I think it's a, a great name for the park.
I also like Old Buck. I wondered, tell me, somebody needs to tell me about Juniper. Why Juniper? Is there any tie in? Is there any, is there a juniper plant? Is there anything that's there? Just wondering why that was second for somebody.
Well, I think it sounds good. And I think it's a much, much, much better name than Old Buck. I mean, it does. Little more exciting, little more park-like, but all, all. Greenery on this list was vetted by the arborist. So if it's not there, we can have it there.
So, Rob.
I think juniper is a generic name. I, I like the idea of, um, I like the idea. I like the idea of incorporating history. I like the idea that there may be at someday, an informative panel that will teach kids. A paragraph of local history and a picture of the old train in the park. I just think it's a fun way to kind of tie things together. Um, instead of Jennifer Sassefress Poplar Park.
I, Sassefress. I used to dig sassafras roots and boil it. Um. Anybody else? My, go ahead, Joe.
I'll chime. I like the historical tie-in as well. I mean, although I did read it, Roberts Drive, it went up, it went up Chambley, Dunwoody. Wink, wink, you know, it didn't go up Roberts, right? The train. But anyway, it's all good, the intent. I love the tie-in and so we could do the art, the theme, the whole park. And then, fine, we should set up a corner. We can do some arborist type activities too. Come on, we can do that. Set aside for the greenery and.
I think of a half-dead male deer. Old Buck, the one that just got shot last week on Ben.
Seriously, that would be out of hunting season. That would be illegal. Oh, the police, no, I saw that. Yeah, I'm sorry. Okay. We are degenerating and only George Houston is here to witness it. Oh, your dad, right? Your dad, right? We are usually not. Okay. So, um, I need a motion or we can, I think I need a motion. Somebody make a motion for one.
I'll move to name the park currently known as Roberts Drive Park to Old Buck Park.
I second that.
Okay, more discussion. I had to make one point. And this is a serious point, and I'm not meaning to make crack up. Do you know what's going to happen to the sign? When we put it up? What's going to happen to that B? I forgot.
That is a very, very good point.
Sorry. Just sharing that. Someone did point that out to me like a citizen. I totally kind of forgot. So if we don't.
We can't sink to the lowest common denominator.
So what I was going to say is, is that if we're not thrilled with any of these names, we can send Catherine back to work on it more. Not twelve, we don't need twelve. But anyway.
Question for, yes, how tall is that sign?
It's our standard park sign. About eight inches.
How big does my letter need to be?
No, they'll stand on each other's shoulders. Okay, I did just, I should have brought that up earlier. I'm sorry, I just remembered. So we're, there's a motion on the floor. All in favor of Old Buck, raise your hand. All, all opposed, raise your hand. That fails. Okay, so. Do we want to vote on juniper or do we want to send Catherine back? Cause we can send Catherine back.
Let's. Brent, is there any pressing reason that we need this to decide this today?
No.
None other than just to make a sign, a permanent sign for the park. I think, I think for future discussions about development and if, um, if there is a referendum in November.
It's a long way away. We can figure this out.
District one deserves a park name. Just saying.
All right. So here's the deal. You have two weeks. Or four weeks. You have four weeks. To come back and we will make it to. Get it done. How's that? Bring us a few choices that are. Less, I think airing is, is it juniper? And I don't even know what crossvine is. I know what poplar trees are. Sassafras, I'm, uh, just that they're a little generic. But just remember the sign. So maybe there's a, Tom, find something else historical. All right. We're done.
Understood.
With this discussion. Deputy Chief Carlson. Good luck with us.
Such a hard topic to follow. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Uh, we sent out an RFQ a couple of months ago because our contract with Brown and Brown Record Service has expired. We received two quotes back from all Georgia towing and, uh, once again, Brown and Brown. Uh, we sent out some matrices to some of our, um, our fleet manager and our major uniform patrol. Um, and kind of rated, uh, how the service has been with, uh, Brown and Brown. And they far. Uh, they highly recommended Brown and Brown. They have been with us from day one. We have an excellent working relationship. And just all of the ratings, uh, pointed towards them. Uh, all Georgia towing, they have some, um, some great input, but. Uh, it did not meet the requirements that we require every day to, to not only fulfill our, as a enforcement, but for here in the community. So. Um, what I'm recommending, um, is for you, uh, to. Approve the Brown and Brown contract. Uh, once again, we've worked with Art, uh, Art Brown for, from day one. And he's very responsive to our needs as well as the, uh, as the community.
If I have questions? Consent? I think that, oh, go ahead. Sorry, John.
I just want to make sure that, I know Brown and Brown is used by almost everybody.
Yes, sir.
I mean, they are used pretty much by everybody. Is there ever a time in which Brown and Brown is. They're used by a lot of people and there's a backup and there's, is there's a delay? Is there any reason why we could have a backup contract for when Brown and Brown is not available? Has Brown and Brown ever been not available? And is there any reason not to, to have a backup service? Availability aspect?
Uh, not that I can recall. They have always been responsive, whether it's multi-vehicle, um, accidents on the interstate. The only time they have trouble is when the interstate are blocked, but we have never had an issue with them. Uh, or, uh, you know, they have over fifty years of experience. They're one mile from us.
I, I'm very aware of both aspects, them being close is, is, is a great aspect of it, their, their experience. I'm just wondering if there's any time that we ever would want more. And it sounds like, no, they're going to meet our needs and have in the past. And you don't see any reason that they wouldn't be in the future.
We can always revisit that. You know, we did have, uh, two hundred and forty accidents last month, uh, which required a lot.
Last month?
Last month.
Is that like a lot more than normal?
It has been. Pretty standard. Like, yeah, so I was gonna go. Cause John wanted to hear about the system that we need. But, um, we can always revisit that, John, if we ever start running into an issue, absolutely.
That's fine. I mean, I just want to make sure for like all the public works sidewalks and other things, we have a number of contractors. And I just, again, Brown and Brown is probably the gold standard. And I'm fine with approving this today. I'm just asking the question, if it makes any sense to have a backup contractor. Right now, it sounds like the answer is no. So thank you.
Yes, sir.
I think that the legislator might, legislature might have passed a bill to change some of the rules, but we're only talking about towing after accidents. Towing on private property is the landlord's responsibility, correct?
That's correct.
Anybody else? All right, seeing none, can this be on consent? Okay. And we are back to public comment. Oh, go ahead.
May, since we still haven't moved on to the next topic.
That's fine.
Deputy Chief was gonna.
Oh, right.
It's just a quick blurb in the sense of police hiring. Uh, I didn't want to belabor him earlier to come up. So he has good data for us, if you could, real quick.
Absolutely. So, uh, right now, we currently stand at five openings. Um, the applications have come in at a trickling pace. Um, we have met with the city manager, uh, the chief and I, so I'm sure you're seeing the billboards out there, you know? Um, you know, we're trying to spread the message on social media, but. It's far and few between that we're seeing them. Um, as I explained, you know, not only did we have, um, two hundred and forty accidents, but patrol responded to four hundred and eighty incidents last month. And detectives were assigned one hundred and twenty-seven cases. So the work is there. And, um. You know, as always, always need the extra help. It's been great. We've been, this is the lowest we've been, um, in a few months, uh, meaning we've been able to full, uh, backfill some of those specialized units. We've been able to get another detective over there. We just opened up another one, uh, and our community outreach, which is also going to help with our recruiting efforts. So. It's kind of where we stand right now, but it's, uh, we're seeing right now an uptick in our part one crimes, which are our larcenies. Um, we're seeing them. Not only over here at our restaurants. The weather is always a predicting factor. Every year we see an increase, uh, at this time. So we're seeing that over there, but. What's more concerning to me is that it also trickles into our neighborhoods, you know, and that's also a concern for, you know, all of you. And of course, the citizens you represent and we represent. Um, you know, so education's a big key, you know, our visibility is a big key. Um, you know, and also we're waiting on this efficiency study to come in. I was talking to city manager, uh, this morning about it. So we're hoping to see some good recommendations and that we could possibly, uh, implement in our department.
But when I read the monthly report from the city manager, there's a number of troubling aspects and the historical aspects just go on and on. And even if the budget committee were to, when the efficiency study comes and we need more police officers and we allocate more police officers, we're still looking for you to hire. So that's the hard part. We need to. I saw the ad on social media. I saw the push and I appreciate that. I just want to make sure that we're all working towards the same goal. And I know we are. So thank you for your efforts.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
So I was with four mayors from four different North Metro cities this afternoon. And we started talking about this a little bit and. Retention is critical. And so we need to hear from y'all about what we can do to make sure. Recruiting is difficult for everybody. And I don't, you know, one of my. Big concerns is that we don't lower standards. As much, I mean, that we just, yeah, we, I would like us not to have to lower standards.
Absolutely not. That'll never happen. I've spoken to, um, the city ma- manager in length about our, I don't want to, it's a vetting process. We have not only strict hiring standards that we put forth. With our oral boards, um, you know, we just, we failed a, a certified applicant. We're not going to lower our standards. And none of that, we have a police training officer program that's in effect right now. We call it our PTO program. And if they don't make, um, if they don't, uh, meet the standards that we set forth, we let them go. I mean, that's, we are not going to. Just, just to have a number out of the road. We will never do that.
Okay. And then I know we're advertising on Ashford Dunwoody Road, not to pick on my fellow mayors who aren't able to pay as much, but. Like. The city of Louisville had one in downtown Atlanta. I mean, should we? I won't go to any more meetings, but I mean, everyone's doing it, right? It's not just us. Should we be advertising somewhere other than Ashford Dunwoody Road?
And yes, uh, the chief and I have spoken to the city manager about, uh, the billboards. You know, there's a lot of digital billboards, which, you know, very costly, but. Um, it's something that we're exploring to see what kind of, you know, a rate we can get and, you know, length, time and. A great location for, to be, you know, highly visible.
Right. And then, um, I hope that when we get this efficiency study, Eric, that it is come and deputy chief, it is coming up with strategies. That free up officers to do what we really need them to do. Um, not waiting for the wrecker at two eighty-five is a big one, for example.
Correct. They are, um, the last part of that study is they were focusing on calls for service. What can we do? Uh, to keep providing the customer service that we are providing, but doing it in an alternative way, you know, low crimes, people just, I lost my cell phone and they self-reported. So. We are looking at very, very many, uh, different ways of. Dealing with the public, but making sure we still have that personal.
And there's no way to get assistance from the state patrol on two eighty-five or is there?
We can ask.
Well, I don't know if we want to. I'm not a expert in this. Maybe that'll be in the report. Okay, and we were at three and then we promoted two people, right? That's how we got to five. Okay. All right. So we're not down bodies from when we were at three openings.
Correct.
Cause we didn't have two more people leave.
No, we did not.
We just filled, backfilled the openings.
Yeah, we had four, one just retired.
Yeah.
So right now, so we're just standing at.
Okay. All right, well, um, it is a national problem and listening to the other mayors today, it's a big deal, but retention is key. Retention is key. So. We'll be talking to y'all more, but thank you. And we are incredibly grateful for how hard everybody's working.
And the feeling is mutual. We appreciate all the support that city council, city manager, that, that you all, uh, support us and provide the necessary equipment. Uh, that, that we can provide for these officers.
Thank you. Appreciate it. I, I wasn't wrong. We have one more. Sorry, Michael.
This is a, uh, a funding request for Vermac Path in front of Dunwoody High School. This. Money's been put in the, uh, capital budget the last two years for this project. It's been designed, the, uh, school board today was. Reviewing the right away request that we had. I haven't, I haven't heard, but I'm assuming that passed. So. We committed to the school that, uh. That we would only do this during the summer. So we're breaking it up into two phases. This would be, uh, funding for the first phase under one of our unit price contracts. Uh, since this was put in the agenda, we've had a few surprises with. Our stormwater being too close to the transmission pole, closer to the transmission pole than Georgia power wants it to be. So we're. We're working through that and it made, the memo says we're planning to build the south end, but we may need to build the north end this summer to give us more time to work out the issues with the utilities. But, um. The, you know, this is just for discussion tonight. And then we were hoping to put this on the next agenda for approval so that we could start construction in June. And we'll, we'll update the memo and work out. The details between now and the next meeting.
Anybody? Anybody? Oh, sorry, Tom.
Yeah, I just have a quick question. So it appears when I read this, uh, like the bulk of that, the stormwater retention's in the, in the, the bottom portion.
Right.
But that was half the price of the like, that, so why, why is the, the top portion twice the cost?
That, well, we're still working, we're still waiting on the final cost from the contractor um, for that southern end. It, hopefully it will be hopefully the northern end. We have eight hundred thousand budgeted. We're asking for four hundred thousand for this year. And then if we do uh, the north end should be less, but it does have some retaining walls in it. So whereas the south end is not, so we'll have more of a, we'll have a better number at the next meeting. It's just an estimate right now.
Right, I was a little worried. Uh, anybody else? Thank you. So this will not be on consent because we, too many questions, I think, still with your end. Cause if you're gonna have to change it.
Right.
Okay.
We should bring it back to us at the next meeting for discussion.
Yes, if you, if, if you have. Right, for business, I'm saying, not consent, so we can talk it through if we need to.
Okay.
So.
And if there could be drawings or at least some photo, some diagrams, just show us what you're thinking of doing, that would be appreciated as well. Just I like pictures. All right.
All right, anybody? Okay, so that's that. I have one public comment card, uh, Fred Bounds, but he's left. All right, uh, council, city manager comments.
No additional comments, Mayor. We do not need an executive session tonight.
Thank you. Uh, council comments. Nope. Saturday was great. And, uh, no executive session. I need a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn, second.
By Stacy, second by Tom. Rob, any further discussion? I don't think so. All in favor of adjourning, say aye. Adjourned. And it's too late. Oh, you forgot, well.
Thursday bike ride with the lunch with the city council. Eleven thirty AM downstairs, Jay Venick is gonna be leading us to lunch on the bike from the parking lot. Human powered e-bikes. Lead by example.